I'm going to call this meeting to the City Council Work Session to Order being Tuesday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Intention will be led by Councilman James Swan. Ready to proceed.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for allowing us to come together as a city and individual and our citizens. We pray that we're able to move forward and make the best decisions for our community. Stand with us and be with each of us and our family. Be with those that are sick and that are loved ones. And we thank you for this day, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
First on our item will be Fix West Texas Budget Update. This presentation will be carried in passing.
Good afternoon. I'm just looking to give you all a couple of emails. Hello. About a month ago, I came by and kind of went over what Fix West... Can you hear me?
No. I'm here to answer.
Hello.
I'm sorry.
Is that better? About a month ago, I came by and did a small presentation to you guys about what we have accomplished at Fix West Texas within our community in regards to spay and neuter. I'm back today because we want to ask you guys to start thinking about potentially budgeting some money for a voucher program that would provide some spay and neuter funding to those who can't afford the full cost. On the handouts you were given, on the first page is the 2021 Animal Control Numbers. And you'll notice on the third page, all animals controlled took in forty-five hundred animals. And out of that forty-five hundred animals, they had to kill twenty-three hundred and eighty. That's fifty-two percent of all animals were killed by the City of Odessa. It shows we have a huge problem. That was only the five, about five thousand that actually entered the animal shelter. There are private rescues and private citizens that work on the outside of that, and those numbers aren't even accounted for. But obviously, we have a huge problem in our community with people that are not spaying and neutering. And one of the things we found at Fix West Texas is some people just simply can't afford it. They're not going out and buying the pets and taking in strays. And we want to be there to help them reduce the number of litters. Therefore, we would reduce the number of intakes, and in time, that saves the city money. And if you look on the next handout, that's for 2022, and you can tell that we're at the same, same thing. As of March thirty-first, our animal shelter took in seven hundred and one animals. We returned fifty-seven to owners, and we euthanized three hundred and fifty-seven. So that's still the fifty percent kill rate. I know that our community...
I'm sorry. Where are you on this?
Okay, on, on the single sheet that's not spayed...
January, February?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought you said March.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So that's actually two months. So in two months, the shelter took in seven hundred animals and killed half. So that's where we stand. That's where our community stands. And we know that we are better than that. We know that we're a solution and solution-driven community. And basically, what we've done is look at other communities and asked, how have they solved this problem? How have they quit killing the animals? And a big part of that is the local spay and neuter, which we brought in two years ago. But when people call us and they don't have the amount of funds, we have limited funding to help the citizens of Odessa and Ector County right now. The City of Midland earmarks two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for their voucher program, and Midland County earmarks a hundred and fifty thousand for their county residents. So we can more easily help them where the City of Odessa and Ector County, there is no voucher program. Now, Fix West Texas has been able to bring in private grants and do some work, and we really do target the Odessa citizens because there isn't that safety net. But that's where you guys come in. We're hoping that since you guys are committed to overall animal care and budgeted that amount for the new shelter, that's a building. And now's the time where we can change our practices and invest in preventing the birds instead of housing and then killing half of those we house. Because right now, we're spending a lot of money on housing animals just to kill them.
Karen, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
On, on the numbers, and I don't see Kelly out here, I would ask her. I know that on some of our statistics, if, if I were to bring in a sick animal, injured animal, that I want to put down, that I need to put down. I think they have to technically show that as an intake and then show that as being euthanized in that regard. Same thing with the Humane Society. You know, they don't euthanize out there. They bring them to the shelter to be euthanized. And so your numbers, it, it kind of makes it sound like all of these were picked up by the animal control officers?
Yes, many of them are.
Many of them probably are. But does that also differentiate between the ones that are voluntarily surrendered, what are you brought in, to be euthanized by request or by the, by the Humane Societies as well, or rescues?
Sure. So what I did is I also requested the euthanasia log. So the DEA requires the City of Odessa to maintain a DEA log and record every single euthanasia. This list, as you can tell, is from one of your animal control officers. And these are just all the feral cats for, I believe, those four days. The gross majority of these are not ill or injured. I did notice a lot of aggressive notations, and that is probably something I have a little bit of a concern with, having worked some in the shelter last year. I think there are experts in animal sheltering. We do not have those here in our community. There are things that we can do better, just like when you guys hired an architect to come in and design the animal shelter. We could use some expert help to come in and help our animal control staff really identify the difference between an aggressive and a fearful animal. Having said that, we kind of have gone over some options. There are some national groups that ask to come in and help with that, but the animal control has said that they are not interested in that.
And that's not entirely all animal control, you know, of course, they follow the direction of the police department and the city management.
Sure.
So that was reviewed all the way up, and it was not something that we found was needed at this point?
Right. But what I'm saying is if you're killing fifty-two percent of the animals that you're taking in, it probably is needed. I feel like it's needed. I feel like our community thinks it's needed. I don't know anybody that thinks it's okay to kill fifty-two percent of animals and not be actively trying to do better. So that's what I'm asking the City Council, is to actively try to do better by funding vouchers on the front end for prevention instead of just spending money on the back end of intaking and killing the animals. And I'm asking you guys to bring in some expertise help. So there are people that have education in animal sheltering. They will come in for free. They will assist us because we actually, there were fifty-two thousand animals killed in the state of Texas last year. And when you think about that, that's five percent just from Odessa. It's relatively a big number when our population is not, you know, half a million, a million. So I really do think we can do better if we all work together and use all the resources that are available to us.
Is this Fix West Texas, it is a nonprofit?
Yes.
It is a nonprofit. Have you applied for grants?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yes. And two of the grants we bought, we actually did the spay and neuter clinics over here in Odessa for the Odessa residents. One was from Animal Balance, and they provided twenty thousand dollars worth of spay and neuter. And then the other one was from Best Friends Animal Society, and they also provided twenty thousand. So both of those grants, a total of forty thousand dollars, have been directed directly to citizens of Odessa and Ector County residents. But we need, I feel like we need our city and our county to embrace this and kind of push it forward. Because if you look at other successful communities, they've had this in place for twenty years, and they're the ones that are taking our animals, that are being transported. They don't have the problem anymore. So we can fix it. We just need to benchmark off the other successful cities.
Councilor, any other questions? I have a, go ahead. I have a question.
Have you, have you addressed the, the commission?
We have plans to do that. We have had private discussions, and then we are waiting to hear back when we can be put on the agenda. Because we will be asking the same thing. Because what, we always say, what goes on in Midland impacts Odessa, and then same thing for the counties. It's all part of the issue at hand. And that's why when we first founded, it was Fix Midland, and we quickly became Fix West Texas.
I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
So looking at your statistics, overall, in the last year, how many animals were taken in?
In 2021? Okay, on that last number, forty-five forty-seven. Four thousand five hundred and forty-seven.
All those are city or city and county?
Those, I don't know if those break those out or not. I did not see where they would have broken it out. The only thing I did see is released to other agencies is a hundred and thirty-two. The only other agency I could think of would be either the county or the Humane Society.
A hundred and thirty-two?
Uh-huh.
And so, minus one thirty-two, what, what animals were euthanized?
No, sir. Forty-five hundred and forty-seven were taken in. So either they were undersurrendered, or somebody found them as stray, or the animal control officers took them in. But there were twenty-three hundred and eighty of those that were killed. And I get that number from the first page as the four ninety-three euthanized plus the eighteen hundred and eighty-seven euthanized in the build.
Those were euthanized by the, our animal shelters, up to sixty?
Yes, sir.
That's pretty good, fifty-three percent. But we don't know if it is a combination of just city and county?
Correct. That is correct.
The other thing is...
They showed, they showed them in our facility. They're one or the other. I mean, there's a certain number.
Well, the thing else is, I'm just trying to get to, we, we know a lot of them's coming through here.
Sure.
Now, the other question is, is, is that you talked about the, a voucher program. You got your numbers from Midland?
Yes.
I talked to them about it, so can you kind of explain what, what that voucher program would be?
Sure. The city voucher program of a county.
Oh, the city.
The city. Okay, so the City of Midland, their voucher program, they allocate a certain amount of money at the first of the year. And then residents will go, well, first of all, the resident has to have their animal vaccinated with rabies and have a city license. And that entitles them to get a voucher from the city for seventy dollars off.
What's a success rate? What were their numbers before and after? Do we have any studies in?
I mean, their numbers have gone down, but kind of have fluctuated with some different animal control directors. So I can't say specifically. I can tell you, from our standpoint, it helps people in need. Our rates are anywhere from seventy dollars to ninety-five. That makes us break even, be able to keep our doors open outside of the grants that we get. So if somebody comes to us and says, oh, gosh, it's seventy-five dollars. I really need to get this little pity, you know, fixed, but I just can't afford it. Well, then we can tell them about the City of Midland voucher, and then all of a sudden, it only costs them five dollars, and they can get it done.
Let me ask you, if, if, if we're euthanizing just a little under twenty-four hundred, and you add a number about two hundred and twenty thousand just from the city alone, where do you see that the number would be if we were to call this program a success?
Where would the...
As far as percentage of what is being euthanized now and in the future?
I think that, okay, so in 2020, it was more around thirty percent, and that was under a different animal director. I would be more comfortable at thirty percent than fifty-two percent. But overall, our goal would be ten percent. That is what other communities have achieved. It's not a short-term goal. That is a long-term goal. But I believe we can do it. We've got a lot of hard workers, and I think our community is ripe for making the change.
You made a point, you saying that under a different direction, 2020 to the current one, you started up to, you know, from thirty to fifty-three. Can you pinpoint why?
I believe that the old director worked a lot with rescues who were transporting animals out of our area at north to Canada and to Washington State, and that has kind of slapped off a little bit. I can't tell you why that is. I know it's a work of passion, but the numbers just aren't there.
Did COVID play any part in that?
Such as?
I mean, as far as being able to make those, those transfers and all the people isolated, did that play a part?
So the, the year of COVID actually was a really good number in animal control because our adoptions were actually up.
Yeah, but I, I mean, on the, on the rescues, you know, on transferring.
Transfer up north to Washington.
So that would have been, I mean, that would have been in 2020 and 2021, not, all right, sorry, 2020, not 2021. So last year, all of the transports were fully open.
If, if, let me ask a question. So explain to me a little bit about, you know, with the transfers, how that consists of, of being able to send them up north and west?
Sure. Okay, so we actually got to help with one from Odessa. I don't know if you remember, but it was in the fall of 2020, there was a December outbreak that Fix West Texas helped with, and all of the survivors, we helped actually transport up north. So basically, you have to take a picture of each dog, assess their behaviors, and market them to be tagged by rescues up north. It's time-intensive. I mean, I think I did like forty to fifty dogs, and I mean, it was, it was, you know, it's work. But once those rescues tack those dogs, they send a transporter with a van that has cages, and you load them up, and they go on to happy forever homes. Most of the time, those dogs actually get adopted before they leave the facility here. It is great for the dogs and the fact that the end result is really good, because they do get, most of the time, they get really good homes. But it is also traumatic for them to have been in the animal shelter and then transported. And it's a very expensive endeavor overall. And that's why we always say, we can't adopt our way out of the problem. We can't transport our way out of the problem. The only thing we can do really is reduce the littering. We have to reduce the unwanted litters. We put things on Facebook all the time. It's spring. All dogs, all cats are in heat. You may not think they are, but they will get pregnant if they are not fixed. If you do not want a litter, and you don't have people that can take those animals, the responsible thing to do is just spay and neuter. And that's what we're hoping with you guys' help, that we can really communicate to the, the city residents that this is what the city wants. We don't want any more stray, free-roaming dogs. We want our, we want to be able to use our parks. We want our kids to be able to enjoy our parks, and we also want it to be a healthy place for the animals as well, but especially for the humans.
If we wind up building, let's see, for example, this council looks forward and wants to do something in, with active with the voucher program, also with the transfers. And the thing is, is that you need, have multiple enemies that you need to tackle.
Yes.
So how do we get people to comply? Put out a PSA and put it on the website.
Sure.
So how do we get compliance?
With spay and neuter?
Yes, to be able to get to those numbers at thirty percent. If we're doing thirty percent without spay and neuter, I think, I think that's definitely the first, the first...
Yes.
...fund of check.
Yes.
Now, when we back it up with something, you know, similar to this program, how do we get, how do we, you know, help us understand, how do we get that information? How do we get the, the compliance?
Sure. So we kind of adhere it to the Don't Mess with Texas program, littering. For, you know, first of all, you've got to put out the trash cans. So we have to make it accessible. You do the voucher programs. We're here. We have the volume. We have the capacity. People can call and get appointments. Before we came to town, a lot of people are booked two, four, six weeks in advance, right? So it's accessible. So they can choose to do the right thing because we're here, and then hopefully, with enough vouchers, it becomes accessible. So that's number one. And then number two is the, the society change. We really have got to all be a voice that the expectation is to spay and neuter your pet, just like we did littering. You know, we have, I mean, nobody wants to cluck your tongue at people, but people need to know what they're causing. And they're costing taxpayers dollars. They're talking, they're costing us millions at the city and county level, and then they're also taking away the ability for us to enjoy our parks and our neighborhoods, just to walk around the neighborhood. Most people can't because of the stray dogs. Try to walk your own dog around the neighborhood, and that attracts more stray dogs. So we just really have to push on that social change, that this is the norm, this is the expectation, and we're going to help you do it, but we need you to buy into it.
And so basically, you, you, you will need here is the cost of neutering plus your marketing costs, to be able to get the, the changes that you're talking about. What's the average cost? The cost, not what we're, not, not what the other communities are charging, but what's the actual cost of spaying and neutering?
Okay, so our system is derived where we break even. So our cost is the seventy to seventy-five dollars per animal. Now, with donations, we are able to drop that down, you know, as needed, but we only have, you know, so much.
Let me ask this other question, Councilmember White. You heard this proposal that came through about experts that are in the dairy unit? I never heard this. Can you tell us a little bit?
Well, and I believe this is through Best Friends?
Yes.
Program. And it was set up that they have personnel that would come and be placed in your animal shelter and run it. I think through the animal shelter and all that, through the police department rights, after reviewing it, we really felt comfortable with the personnel that we have. Kelly Hendricks has done a very, very good job with the shelter. And we have a lot that's going on right now. We're moving forward with the new shelter. And so it was the, it was the recommendation that we not, we not pursue that at this time. We already paid a shelter manager, and that would be adding another person to the overall, you know, what, what we already have in place.
Well, it is not really set to replace the shelter director. It is someone to advise the animal director. So it's a partnership. I hate that Kelly sees it that way, but when you're euthanizing fifty-two percent of animals, I would beg for help. And to have someone say, here's free help valued at a hundred thousand dollars, and our city say, no, we don't really, we don't really want that because our guy, our guy's doing good. We've gone from thirty percent kill to fifty-two percent kill. I, I can't get my head wrapped around that.
And, and, you know, some of those numbers, again, we probably need to investigate a little bit more. And I'm not...
Absolutely.
...obligating, you know, what you say. It's just that there are so many variables involved in, in our shelter, you know, one being the feral cat issue. Now, Fix West Texas, I know that you guys did have a program to spay and neuter feral cats, right? And then you released them back into that community?
Correct.
And that a lot of our community does not want feral cats, you know, in their neighborhoods. You know, I mean, that, that doesn't...
You're not going to be able to eradicate those.
And I agree.
It's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that you can get rid of those, and the brackles will all be happy.
You know, I think some of the, the concerns that I have heard are, you know, when people call and they're wanting animal control to do something about the feral cats, and they come out, they trap and, you know, and take care of that. Yeah, I mean, the fact is, you know, a good number of them are euthanized. I know for myself, personally, I, before I got on council, I had to solicit the aid of the animal shelter because of feral cat problem immediately around my house, but they were sick.
Sure.
You know, they were, they were obviously ill. And so I would fully expect that they were euthanized. And so, you know, when you talk about the rate of euthanization, it's not all just they're collecting dogs that are stray or, you know, gotten out of the yard and they're immediately euthanized. And they do everything they can to keep, for him to do that.
I don't know that they do.
In addition...
It's one of the statistics that I have on the Fatal Plus, many are euthanized on the truck before they ever hit the doors of the animal shelter.
And that could be?
Yeah. Many of them.
But you don't know what the circumstances are...
Correct.
...when they were euthanized. Had they been hit by a car and they were already, you know...
I'm concerned. I'm very, very concerned, and that's why I'm here today.
And I really...
I'm not talking about feral cats. Feral cats, we're always going to have them. They're like brackles. They're like fish. You can shoot at them in the pond, but you're not going to make a, a dent. There are very few communities, unless you trap, neuter, and release eighty percent, that you're going to make a huge dent. That's the research on that. But what I'm talking about are the dogs, the strays, you know, the owner surrenders. If we just, I mean, maybe she can come up with the statistics just on the dogs, but I see pit bull after pit bull, and I see German shepherd after German shepherd, and husky after husky. And I'm just like, why? Why are all these owner surrenders? Because they're not getting spay and neuter. And we can, we can invest on the front end and help stop this instead of spending our money sending animal control officers out to trap feral cats that, yes, you're going to get six and kill those. Yay, great. Guess what? In two weeks, you're going to have six more, because that's what feral cats do, is the back-end effect. They, they will fill that hole. So we're really spending a lot of money on outdated ways of handling animal control. And what I'm asking is for us to benchmark off some of the leading cities, cities that have this under control and, and, and just try a few of those things. And that's what Best Friends, that's what they, they're experts in. And that's why I had suggested and kind of twisted their arm to offer that to the city, is because I know we're ripe for change, but we have to have the right people in the right place. And I don't know that we have that. I really don't know that we have that.
I would, I would recommend that Chief Gurkey check on some of these issues, and since the animal shelter does fall under your direction. And, you know, ensure that we are doing, you know, taking any measures that we can to try to avoid unnecessary euthanization.
That has been the direction for, for a long time, yes, too. Which we absolutely want to reduce the number of euthanizations. What we've said as our goal is to be, we will never, probably never be in no-kill shelter.
Right, correct.
But we want to get that number as low as possible.
Right, correct.
And we agree.
And, and, and that's what, I mean, Tom Sprohl and I served on the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, and, and I know that we're constantly getting information about programs that they're providing, the adoption, rescues, you know, that they are coordinating. You know, some of it quite obviously has been a shortage in personnel at the animal shelter. And, you know, as far as maybe being able to make, you know, much more of that. And for the council, you know, we've discussed everything that Karen has brought up, the spay and neutering program, all four of them, but not many people are, or I would say... Um, all four of that. But not many people are, uh, or I would say there aren't many people that are. There are many people that don't seem to be in favor of neutering their pets. Um, we talked about, um, putting, um, what's the terminology? Uh, on litters where they have to have a permit litter, you know, erase, erase pets, you have to get a permit from the city that you have a litter. We, we've discussed a variety of things that are going on. And, uh, but, you know, I didn't know if there was anything else that you might want to say to address. And, and don't be so shit. I am very much in favor of spaying and sheltering. And, um,
And I think most citizens are in favor of spaying and neuter. We found over three thousand last year from Odessa citizens. Um, it's just, it wasn't, it's not financially affordable. And when they're having to decide on that hundred dollar bill, if they're going to feed their kids or prevent a litter of the pit bull that's living out in their backyard that they didn't even find, their neighbors, that they started feeding it because they started feeling sorry for it, they're going to choose their kids every time.
They shouldn't.
Right. So that would cost the city seventy-five dollars to fix that pit bull. But when that pit bull then has six to eight, then our shelter has to use staff and kenneline and everything. And that averages out, um, I have it on that one sheet, to a hundred dollars an animal. So then all of a sudden that blooms and that's six hundred to eight hundred dollars that costs the city instead of seventy-five. And that's why I'm asking to put prevention in. Let's, let's start investing on the front end and let's try to prevent, just try. Just give it a try instead of putting all the money on the back end of spending the money on a problem that already exists. And Chief, we know that y'all don't want to euthanize animals, no more than we do. But how we prove that to everyone is by trying new things. Just like we do at Fix West Texas, we're never perfect, we're never stagnant, we're always trying new things. And when people come in like this and say, hey, we're going to, we want to provide training and support for free. We say, come on, can I learn one thing? Can I learn two things that would help my community? For me, it's worth it. I'm not, I'm not in fear of my ego or whatever it may be that the shelter is afraid of, of having somebody to come in and advise. But if it could just bring one or two great things to our city, I think job well done.
I feel like Chief, that we have looked at a variety of things and I want you to answer that and that we have tried to be very proactive.
I, I think when, when you, um, when you talk about Best Friends, um, we, there was a contract involved. And when you looked at some of the verdicts in the contract, it did basically say that they, and I'm being a little loose here, but, but they were, they were responsible basically to tell the director what, you know, how the, the shelter is going to operate. From my perspective, if the citizens of Odessa and the city of Odessa owns this shelter, then that too should be responsible for property, you know, running it, not, not another entity. Um, so that's what happened with that. When you look at these numbers, I, I would say they're almost absolutely all true county numbers. But understand that county, uh, animal control picks up out of county and they bring to our shelter. This is where they, they bring all their animals. And I think I saw a number, no, hold on to this number, but I think it was like thirty to thirty-five percent of animals that come to the shelter are county animals.
That the city is paying for.
Yeah.
Now, going back to this, and that's why we're going to do the same presentation, because believe me, we need to buy in from both, for it to work. Going back to Best Friends, the city of Abilene is our nearest relative city that has had Best Friends come in and do the embed program. And I encourage any of y'all to just pick up the phone and ask them their experience with that. There's other successful cities that have also brought them in. This is something they do. This is what they do. Um, their goal is to reduce euthanization by twenty twenty-five. So, um,
Did Abilene just basically turn their shelter over to Best Friends though? I think they had someone for Best Friends become their director for a while.
Their situation was different because they did not have a director. Um, so for part of that time, yes, Mike Rigger with Best Friends was the only one there. But my question is, I mean, it really is, anytime I'm hiring somebody, you want to look at education and experience. You have the right person in place for the job. And if you don't, you can help by providing some education and they can get experience as they go on, right? And that's what I'm saying. I don't know that Kelly has the education and experience. And that's why I feel like we need Best Friends in our community.
Well, let me ask this question. Is this program, you mean, this is Best Friends?
Yes.
Is this free?
It is free. It has been offered free to the city of Odessa and it's valued at a hundred thousand dollars for the services.
Okay, so it's been offered for free for how long?
Um, for, over a year, a year and a half.
So, so basically they'd be coming in for how long a period of time?
Um, up to a year.
Okay.
But it can also be scaled back. So you're right, they did have, they do have something for you to sign, like you come up with something.
The, the, the next question, if it's free and they're coming in here to train and advise, why is there a necessity, a necessity for, for, for?
Okay, so they get grant funds. So they get grant funds to go out and help train shelters and best practices, right? So they have to get the statistics to report out to their grantors. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
But hasn't explained this, why, why do they have to be under contract for the city if it's a, a free service? What stipulations do we have to agree in order for them to come here outside of just the reporting and the statistics to, for the grant button?
Sure.
Satisfaction?
Sure. From my understanding, um, you have to agree to report the statistics, right? And you have to agree that the city buys into this. The last thing they want to do is show up in a city where they're not wanted. Because it's going to waste their time and it's going to waste their honey. They want to come where people want them. And that's my fault. I thought we wanted them here from, um, because I guess, uh, Chief, Deputy Chief Harple was in charge of the shelter when I kind of like engineered this. And so I thought it seemed like y'all wanted them here. And so
Mayor, I think this may be getting a little bit off.
Well, let, 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 let me wrap this up a little bit. It's, because we're not going to solve this right now. So I have, unfortunately, you know, this weekend and, and I think some of, some of the council can, I, I just got blasted about this issue. And this was, was called by a citizen, get out, get out, get my ass out of behind from the, from the desk because I have no clue what's going on at the animal shelter. Didn't respond to it. And so, but here's the thing is, is that, you know, I have spoken to Bill and I have spoken to Abilene. The council has talked about this, the issue, and I think there's an important issue here is that I think there's a, a culture change in a part of our community in the county that really is reluctant to the neutering, and it may be based on, on other costs. So let's do this. Let's have, let's allow the council here to, let's extract some data.
Sure.
Uh, let's, I'd like to see that contract by, by this group, uh, you know, Chief Gerke reports about, you know, about some of the issues that, you know, the euthanization and those kinds of. Because I, I know I'm, I'm not at the rest on some of the smaller details. So give us an opportunity to do that and then we'll bring it back to the work session. And then we'll see if there's a direction, what direction we want to take. Well, I, I know one thing is that we're supportive of, of our animal shelter. We support the animal shelter. We definitely support the staff and the director that's out there. We have full confidence in the things that she's built. And so let us look into some of the things that have been brought up for today.
Okay.
And then we'll be able to report and, uh, I'd gladly like to sit down and, and roll these little final points a little bit more. I got a kind of more questions for, we don't, nobody here wants minutes taco cheese this, so we're not going to get into that.
And I, I'm sorry that someone attached you. That is something that, you know, I know.
It comes with, it comes with the territory. It's, it's, it's fine.
And that's why we always try to be solution oriented. We're not mad at anybody. We just want to help. We, you know, we've identified a problem and we just want to try to help solve it.
It's okay. Oftentimes, I, I, it's okay. I understand. I like, I know their passion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the, uh, I have a chief discover, just supporting opening.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Ms. Shawner, Director of Discovery Odessa. I'm here to give our quarterly report for the months of January through March of twenty twenty-two. Okay, so for the last, for the first three months, the total economic impact that our department was involved with, uh, came to four million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. You see that in each month, uh, how it's broken down. February was the highest. Uh, we assisted thirty-nine total groups with a total of forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven attendees. Uh, total hotel nights that we were able to document, or two thousand, six hundred and ninety-six just in those first three months. Uh, the attendees by group, you see how those are broken out. And again, sports is, you'll notice in each category, the attendees. Sports tends to have the most attendees with the families that get to come with them. Um, hotel nights by group, same thing, more hotel nights. And then the economic impact, you see that sports, um, also is the highest in, in that category. But we have had different meetings and different special events that have contributed to all of those figures. Any questions on that page? Uh, these are the groups that are made up of those first three months. And I just want to highlight, and, um, you see some of the pictures that are up there. Uh, the Sandhills rodeo, they did have two hundred and three documented room nights. They had twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-two attendees with a one point two million dollar worth of economic impact. Jim Wise, the director of that, uh, rodeo, said this was one of the most successful events he's had in years. So they had two or three sold out nights. And so he was very pleased with that. Proud Pleasers, um, dance event, that was again, a very, a first time event that Teresa recruited here and they are now looking to come back to annuals. So we're very pleased with that. And they're going to be marketing and recruiting dancers from around the community. That brought in two hundred and ten room nights and eighty thousand, five, five hundred and twenty-one dollars worth of economic impact. The T A C D B Winter Conference brought in two hundred and seventy-two room nights. You can see a picture up there. We have our volunteers welcoming them, um, and at registration and just talking and answering questions about Odessa to our, to the people that were registering. The Gorilla Heavy Hitter Boxing Event, this was another, uh, first time event. Um, boxing used to be a big deal in Odessa. It's kind of coming back again. And so this particular gentleman, Ira, his son is involved, he's, uh, winning these, um, these events. And so in this first event, it was held out at West Odessa. He brought in fifty-six room nights. There were over thirteen hundred attendees. And the economic impact for that one was a hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and ten. He's going to be having another, uh, event, another boxing event. Um, is that in?
Middle of May, I think.
Middle of May, I think so. So that's, and he's expecting it, expecting that one to be even bigger. Uh, Racing Pains even with them, uh, when we attended the open house, uh, we learned that they had twenty-eight trainers here for three weeks. They actually still do. And then ten dancers are here for seventy-five nights. And our department was able to provide them with literature of Odessa, since they're here for so long, what there is to do, where to go eat. I guess they don't want to eat racing pains every day, so, so we can give them other options. Um, okay, any questions on, on those groups? Here are the upcoming groups and events that we're working with. And I do want to just, uh, highlight just a few of them. In, let's see, in, in April, there's the West Texas Justice of the Peace and Constables Conference. We're working with Missy Walden on that. Uh, Amanda did bill and compete with a couple of cities to win that conference here. They're looking at seventy-five to a hundred attendees. And so we're excited about that. Um, the N C J double A golf tournament that's hosted by O C, that's in May. That one is a huge event. That is being held May fifth through the eleventh. They already have a hundred rooms for six nights at the Marriott. So that's six hundred room nights at the Marriott. Um, they have a hundred and sixty golfers and coaches signed up, fifty university golf coaches that are here for, um, recruiting. And then three hundred, they're expecting three hundred friends and family to attend here too. So it's going to be at least, um, Wayne Baker, who's the athletic director for Odessa College, has said he's expecting over a thousand room nights from that event alone. Um, and they're doing a really good job of documenting as each, as each person is registering, they have to have a piece of paper asking them where they're staying, how many room nights. A lot of times that's our best way of documenting the events because even though we have a system that talks to the hotels and asks for pickup reports, they don't always know what that attendee's there for. They don't ask, you know, what event are you here for? So, um, so they're doing a really good job of helping us get that, gather that information and know how many room nights. Uh, North Texas PGA Youth Golf Tournament is in June. That's out with the Odessa Country Club. This year, they are now an A J G A accredited event and it's online. And we spoke with, um, the meeting planner out there and he's seen an increased number of participants from around the state. And we've had that every year as well. Texas Agalap Extension Asians Conference is in August. Um, again, Amanda won this event or won this conference here against two other cities. Uh, a hundred and twenty-five attendees with two hundred and seventy room nights for them. And then the last one, I want to highlight's in August. And that one is the West Texas Worship Conference. So this event was held in Midland last year. They had over a thousand attendees and they're looking to rotate it between the cities. Um, at the Marriott alone, they've requested five hundred and eighty-five room nights for that event. And then they've also asked us to reach out to five other hotels that will have fifty room nights at their hotels. So it's going to be all across the city. Um, the estimated economic impact for that, and this is all conservative, is three, three hundred thousand, four, four, four hundred and thirty-two. So we're, um, we're excited about that one. Again, that one's a, a really big deal. And, and so we're looking forward to welcoming them and, and providing them with the information on Odessa. Any questions on, on that page? And then the next, I just want to talk about our marketing report. This, even this PowerPoint, we hired Ashley Florin. She's our new marketing and communications specialist. She's done an incredible job of everything. This PowerPoint is proof of it. Um, our social media, our growth has increased, our engagements have increased across Instagram, Facebook and Twitter. You can see what our top Facebook post was, was over, uh, Herb's Side Bistro. That, that reached fourteen thousand, nine hundred people. Um, our top Instagram post was over the, for these three months was over the rodeo. You can see our billboard advertising. Even the Discover Odessa kiosk inside of the Marriott, that alone is starting to increase. We've already seen just a thousand in one month. And before, you know, COVID and everything, we were just seeing two to three hundred engagements. But it's starting to pick up as people are starting to go to the conference some more. Uh, you can see where we placed our digital ads and print ads. Um, our email open rate is, is considered high. And then just our website visits and the traffic going there is considerably high as well. So I want to commend Ashley to the job that she's doing in, in really marketing the city and pushing those. And, and I don't know if you follow us or not, I hope you do, but on, especially on Facebook, she does promote our weekend events. And I feel that subconsciously that's going to help people from Odessa quit saying that there's nothing to do in Odessa. I mean, there is a lot to do in Odessa and it will meet, whether you're in the arts, music, family oriented activities, roller skating, whatever, there's something to do. So I highly encourage anybody you talk to yourself to follow that page so that you can see all that there is to do. And we're hoping to influence that more. And then just the last page is our Discover Odessa upcoming news. We do, um, May first through the eighth is National Travel and Tourism Week. And to celebrate that, we are chartering a bus for the Discover Odessa Bus Tour. We're partnering with Randy Hens, going to be our tour guide. And he does a great job and he's just full of entertainment and information. Um, some of the sites that we're going to be visiting is the Ector Theater, which will be great for those. And this is free, by the way. We have two different buses, the first one, the morning one, nine to twelve is completely full. It's slowed out. And we only have ten to fifteen spots left over on the second tour from one to four. Um, we'll be going to the Ector Theater. We're going to be passing some public parks. And then one of the exclusive, uh, things that people are going to be able to see is the Wall of Fame at Permian High School. So this is something that typically isn't shown to everybody, but we had a connection there. We was willing to open it up. And it has decades of, of, you know, years of football at Permian. And then they have one special wall that, and it's wrapped in pictures and they have all their trophies across. Um, so that's always something. We have a lot of sports enthusiasts. It did put Odessa on the map. You know, whether good or bad, we still have a lot of people that come here wanting to go see Ratliff or, or see what Permian's about. And then lastly, um, Allison and Ashley are starting a Discover Odessa presented by the Odessa Chamber Palmer's podcast. They've already interviewed several people. And so this again is just another opportunity to talk about all the things that are going on, whether it's with Randy or Craig Stoker, uh, at the Chamber. And I'm trying to think of who else you've interviewed.
Um, our Chamber staff, all of our executive directors. And then, um, for the third episode, we'll have Chef Alejandro with herbs like Escher and Kate Hackett with tip of the moon juice.
Yeah. So just doing a great job of promoting these local businesses and just bringing, you know, bringing awareness to them and appreciating the work that they do here in our community. And, um, that's all for my report. Do you have any questions for us?
Council, any questions? Direction? Request?
Like that weekend, uh, what's happening in the weekend and I shoot back to my friends in other places and say, this is what we're doing. What are y'all doing? And I bet they get that back and they all kind of don't even know what's going on in a big city where there's a lot of, a lot of creatures.
Yes, ma'am. She's been a great job. Thank you, Hannah.
I'd like to suggest that you, uh, actually that you interview the mayor because apparently a lot of our constituents thinks he's in the dark.
We're going to be hit up pretty quick, Mary. So thank y'all very much. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, Margaret. We move on to Island Reef, Senator, and I'd be a little nervous between Odessa
We move on to Island Reef Conservative, and I'd be a little nervous between the Odessa Corporation and Downing Mountain Equipment LLC. It's a good team.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm asking around an update to what you had in your packet. These numbers changed, but not materially, uh, and so we wanted to go ahead and let you have the latest and brightest on this. This, uh, the Odessa Golf Corporation met on April fourteenth to consider a grant request from, uh, Downing Wellhead, uh, which, uh, it's shown here as Downing, Downing Canyon Basin. Um, this is primarily a request associated with the creation of jobs and the retention of jobs. Uh, there's a minor part of it that's associated with the capital investment, associated with heavy equipment. Uh, Downing is planning to consolidate, uh, two locations that are in, uh, uh, close to Air Terminal and moving those to Odessa, they haven't determined exactly where that's going to go. There's a Murphy Street location and a location south, uh, I twenty. Uh, but that, that, uh, will, there'll be a new building, build a suit, sixty-five thousand square feet, but it'll be built by landlord, so there's no capital investment associated with that that's been considered with this grant request. Uh, the, if, if you'll, you'll notice that the, the annual payroll on ultimately a hundred and ten employees, which is retained and new, new employees, uh, will reach a little over seven billion dollars. And during the five-year period of the contract, uh, they'll, uh, they are projected to have over twenty-seven billion dollars in payroll. We approved at the ODC meeting, uh, a jobs creation grant of a million six oh nine plus, and then a capital investment of thirty thousand, a six seventy-two for a total of a million six forty. These are good-paying jobs, uh, and, uh, you know, it's, it's a, it's a good time certainly for us to again, try to, to provide good, good jobs to the community. Uh, I'll entertain any, any questions that you may have regarding this, uh, grant request.
Council, any questions? If this is a, some, this was something I would put back on the back line, wouldn't it?
Yes, yes.
Tell us a little bit about it.
Yeah, well, I think it was, uh, two thousand nineteen, they came to us, and then, I, I can't, it escapes me, but it may have been the pandemic that, uh, that pushed them back. Uh, and, 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 so they, they basically were looking at a holiday card, determining whether they were going to be able to go forward with this or not. And now, now that things have smoothed back out, and certainly the resurgence of the oil and gas business in Odessa is, is making this possible.
They're a manufacturing company that primarily is out of Oklahoma.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, that's correct.
And so their primary activity would be, uh, insulation services, they'll also be, they'll be rebuilding housing.
Yes.
So it basically comes along, uh, consolid, I can't think today. Consolidation of their facilities that have been coming into Odessa, kind of like what Dean Alvin did. Dean Alvin, what they did, they created regional distribution centers, so they'll be doing distribution.
Yeah, I think they, they probably do some fabrication.
Fabrication, okay. Council, any questions?
They're, they're not even, are you putting that over Midland, or are they, he's not even talking about it? Just curious why they picked Odessa, I'm happy, but, I'm curious.
I think, I think they looked at the new president, they'll be able to, uh, corporations.
No, I have a word for that, but I can't say if we.
They should tell me that that's why they were coming to Odessa, because they.
Oh, my gosh.
I've got to be shoes off here.
I'm not sure if Ben Alfred any, any kind of percentage or how, uh, to be honest with you. But with, you know, this match, this, this matches, uh, uh, our guidelines, uh, and, uh, I think it's a, it's a good use of our funds.
I agree entirely, you know, we, we want different kinds of businesses in here, you know, unfortunately, you know, we are hardly a low passion, so, so be it, so I'd like to have a, well, a company in the United States in here to, uh, service kind of, you know, so this is really exciting to me. Appreciate your hard work.
Yeah, when will they make the decision on to, to suit these?
I, I think, I mean, they, they did not provide a timetable, but I think it's going to be probably within the next, the next couple of months. And, and, you know, certainly work, because they've got some design work to do and certain type of construction.
Is he, uh, built a suit still in Ector County, or San Odessa?
Well, it depends, the, the one in Murphy, on Murphy Street is in Ector County, and the one that's south of it is, is just in Midland County. You know how, how that line runs, runs like this, I think it is.
So maybe, uh, throw a couple of election ballots here on Murphy. I'm just being selfish here.
Well, me too, I don't know. I wanted, I wanted it to be in Ector County and San Odessa.
And that's the question, how to have it?
Well, you know, and I agree with you.
What, what should we do to get them to locate Ector County and not Midland?
Still in the city of Odessa, where.
Yeah, lots of them.
Well, the, the Murphy Street would be, it's in our ETJ, the, the, I think the, the way that we consider this is obviously no capital investment, because, you know, it's going to be, be the landlord, but, and, now, we're, obviously get the benefit if, if that happens in, in, uh, I don't, in Ector County as opposed to, uh, Midland County, but, uh, you know, there may be some, we could sweep the pot a little bit with it, but, but this is primarily a jobs creation grant. And I want to make sure that.
Yeah, yeah, there's no capital, there's no capital in this.
I mean, we, I mean, we can, we can do what we could to, uh, see if there was anything else that would be material to them locating on Murphy Street. Maybe, maybe there's some infrastructure costs that we could.
How, how, or out of Murphy?
Well, you, you know where the Grill Odessa, uh, uh, in, the industrial, uh, park is, is, on, on Murphy Street? It's, it's very near that.
Yeah.
So maybe, so maybe, maybe there's, maybe there's some in, in, infrastructure, uh, we can assist with the infrastructure in some way. I mean, obviously that qualifies under the, our, our four, our eight guidelines.
Well, right now, we're just considering, this is kind of made for Taylor.
So I'm just, I'm just.
Well, and, and maybe it's what I could ask, and certainly don't want to conflict with what, uh, uh, Senator Turner would say. Maybe we could approve this with the idea that, if we, we may come back and say, hey, we, we'd like some kind of additional incentive in order to ensure that this happens on, on Murphy Street. But at least we'll have this one in our hand.
Yeah, I think that shows good faith and honesty for them, and I think that's fair.
Sure.
Is this, uh, Midland County, probably they're looking at, is that south, or how far east is it from three thirty-eight on that point? Do you know?
The, the one in south of I twenty? It's, it's about two miles from, uh, seventeen, seventeen eighty-eight, two miles west of seventeen eighty-eight. Uh, if you know where, uh, Key Energy, uh, and, uh, and, uh, Big Tex Trailer in that area, it's, it would be, it would be across the interstate from that. There's a, there's a, you can see where an industrial park is.
That would be in the city of Dallas, then. I think the city of Dallas goes that far.
No, that one would not be, but the Murphy Street, the Murphy, Murphy Street would be.
So if they, if they selected the Midland County, then ODC would not be providing the million plus.
No, no, if they, if they, I mean, because this is a jobs creation, it's ba- it's basically, the location is much closer to Odessa than it is to Midland. The jobs will, I mean, we'll get the benefit of the jobs here, consolidating into a location that's, that's much closer to Odessa than it is to Midland. So, so I, I, I mean, I, I would be very comfortable saying, I still think that the jobs creation grant benefits our community.
I just like, I like your idea, I'd like to see if we couldn't present them with this and go back and say, well, give them some letter, send it to Phil, put it on Murphy Street, I just think that's good business on our part.
Wouldn't, you can't hurt it.
Yeah.
Council, any other questions? There you go.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. You owe me very shoes.
We're going to move on to Island Reef, Keep Odessa Beautiful update.
First of all, good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to come in and offer some updates of what Keep Odessa Beautiful is doing and the wonderful things our volunteers are doing in our community. One of the things that I wanted to, well, we do have the team first of all, I'm sorry, I have Alicia and Daniel, they're going to be passing out some goodie bags for you guys. And, uh, keep in mind that all those bags are, we have, they fit our missions, things that are, you know, useful materials, so please, I hope that you enjoy those. I'm going to start with, the first item that I wanted to discuss was the Governor's Committee Achievement Award. I don't know if you've ever heard that, that is the GCAA. And what that is, is a, a grant that we are keeping as a beautiful advice for every year. And the, uh, it's for landscape, it's a landscape award, and it's for two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for our, uh, category, which is category nine. Unfortunately, this year, we didn't get it, and it's, uh, it's heartbreaking every time we get those news. Um, as you can see, we did get, uh, we were, I mean, we did, uh, third place, uh, we, we placed on third place. We also had the Sustain Excellence Award, meaning that we had a score of ninety and above, that we're doing a great job. So we're still proud of everything we're doing, with, um, I cannot say enough of our volunteers and our community, because I don't know why we have not won, because in the past, they have called us, other communities that have received the grant, to ask us what we're doing with our programs that have been successful, because Keep Odessa Beautiful says so. I don't understand, but we haven't won yet. Um, the next item that I have is the, uh, in December, we met, uh, the, the whole team met for the strategic planning session, and it took four hours to, uh, kind of, what it was is, we got together to see where Keep Odessa Beautiful was going to go in the next five years, what we needed to work on and, uh, and, and either change or work on, expand on what we have already. So, uh, one of the items that we discussed was, was the mission. Uh, people were having questions about, um, how do we empower our community? How are we empowering Odessa? So that was one item that they discussed we needed to look into, be a little bit more specific. And the other one was the partnerships, you know, we cannot make it without that, without the partnership. So Odessa could, Keep Odessa Beautiful could not do what we're doing. So those are the things that we discussed, we, um, we looked into it, uh, we went ahead and voted. I gave you the old, uh, mission statement and the revised mission statement, and we are confident that that gives you more an explanation of why Keep Odessa Beautiful is here. Why do we exist? What do we provide for our community? And, uh, do you have any questions about that?
I'm going to be here, we'll just see, I'm going to be here.
Okay. And, well, and one of the things that we're very proud of is our vision, Keep Odessa Beautiful. Uh, it's big about be part of the solution. We believe that it takes the whole community to make a difference. It's not just a couple of groups of volunteers that can do that, it takes the whole community. We understand there's problems, and there's things that we've got to work on, but how can we be part of that solution? So that's something that we take out there to our community. It's actually on our billboard, we're working on a billboard that will be on, on the one located in our West County road. And, uh, I don't know if you've seen it on the solid waste, solid, uh, sorry, solid waste trucks, I don't know if you had, had a chance to look at that, they're being wrapped with this, uh, wrap, and, uh, we have received nothing but great feedback about that. So it's just kind of created, raises that awareness of, you know, why we're here and what can we do to make our community better for you. In this slide here, um, I wanted to, for you to see how many programs and events we have with Keep Odessa Beautiful. And it is a well-balanced, uh, group of, uh, it's the four components of Keep Odessa Beautiful. And we're very proud to say that right now, we have twenty-four programs and events, very successful. And so we're happy that they're a little bit of everything, you know, as you can see, we have them in all areas in the four components that we do offer. Uh, we are, I feel that we're well-balanced on those programs and events. And on that strategic plan that I was, I mentioned to you guys that we met in December, uh, that we actually, we met for, uh, four hours to discuss the goals of Keep Odessa Beautiful. Uh, we did come up with a strategic plan that we voted on and it was approved. Uh, but of course, I'm not going to go over that, it's, it's very detailed, but I did email that to you guys. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those. Uh, one of the ones that I wanted to focus on today is the goal of expanding our programs. Uh, the way we think that that's, the actions that we need to take to do that is increase sustainability projects around our community, continue educational programs for our youth and adults, continue assessing current programs to identify opportunities for change. We understand that our population continues to change, increase, so we need to, we always assess our programs. After an event or a program, we, we all sit down and assess, what do we do? Is this, is this being effective or really impacting our community? So those are the things that we wanted to focus on. And the one that I wanted to talk to you about is the Campus Cleanup Rivery. If you haven't heard of that, I'm, I'm just really proud of that, that's why I wanted to talk about that one today. This one started, uh, in two thousand and eighteen with two schools, and that was Odessa and Permian High. And right now, I am proud to say that we have eleven schools participating. We're talking from high school all the way to elementary. And they're doing a wonderful job, I cannot speak enough of the wonderful job that they're doing, and how proud they are to make the difference that they're making in their community. We have three schools that have expanded outside their campus, huge breakthrough. Because we understand that change starts at home, so for them to actually take that from out of the campus into the school is a huge thing for us. Uh, they're reducing waste by keeping items out of the landfill, you understand that by taking all those, okay, I'm sorry, let me back up. The Campus Cleanup Rivery started to, to actually empower our students, so that they could keep their campus litter free. So they understood that they needed to recycle as well. So we added the component of recycling. Now they're recycling water bottles as well as picking up the litter. You have, this, just now, they started in October, right now they are up to eight thousand three hundred and ninety-five pounds. And I'll reiterate that, eight thousand three hundred and ninety-five pounds of clean plastics. And that, why it's important, because it's not just recycling, it's making sure that it's not contaminated. And that's the problem that we have here. I don't know if you have ever, if y'all have received complaints of citizens saying, you throw away the recyclables. Well, they throw it away because of the contaminating. So for us, for these students to be doing this is a huge, you know, breakthrough, because that's, that's showing that people can do the right thing, even the right resources. Um, so that's what I wanted to talk to you about, and, uh, again, and the collaboration they would have between solid waste, based disposal, and that we got offered, oh my gosh, we couldn't do it without them. Because we, you understand that we need those resources, we need those containers at schools for them to, to dispose of their items, to actually put the items in there. So we really appreciate what they do for us and the students and what. You got to go to, actually, uh, this Friday, we're going to announce the winners for this, uh, the spring. So you can come, we, we invite you to come over. Okay, this is the flower that I wanted to share with you on what, uh, what we put out there and how the students, they talk among each other, the teachers, you know, but they also see that this year, we provided monetary stipend, you know, so that that way they can, um, expand on their initiatives, you know, and they continue doing the great job that they're doing. And with the, actually, you mentioned a minute ago that Don't Mess With Texas Spring Speed, uh, it was the Don't Mess With Texas campaign, but we call it the Spring Speed, and that's where, uh, the community comes together and they pick up litter all over the community. We started with the kickoff celebration and education fair on March the twelfth, and it's continued on, it starts in March and it goes all the way to, um, May. Uh, as you can see, we had plenty of volunteers, we had a hundred and fifty citizens attended. Just the impact that they made, uh, shredding documents, we were able to provide that service for free, had no cost to them, and it was a hundred and eighty pounds of documents that were shredded. The cleanup, as I mentioned, this started in March, and as of, from March to now, they have, we have had seven hundred and one volunteers. They collected twenty-nine point five tons of litter. So, and that's just in, like, it is, it is amazing to see the impact that these volunteers make and that, uh, they don't stop. The, the pandemic does make them stop, so nothing's going to make them stop, they're hard workers. And the next one is the big event hosted by the Aggie Monstra. They, uh, came to us and partnered with us, uh, to, to make a difference as well. And they, they actually had forty bags of litter removed with eighty volunteers. But what impacted us is the fact that they were able to do forty bags of plastics, you know, the recycle. They actually focused on the fact that one, some of those items can actually be recycled, you don't have to end up in the landfill. So that was really good. Uh, and both, both, uh, events, we had an education workshop to educate on the proper recycling and waste. Uh, and both, both, uh, events, we had an education workshop to educate on the proper recycling and waste reduction. And these two here, the, the flyers that you see, uh, right now during, for some reason, uh, we're, we're busy all, all year round. But for some reason, March and April is really, really crazy. So we have what we call the Week Can We Help Program, we, this is a, a program that has been such a great success. Uh, we, we have, it's volunteer-based, so now we have 47 properties for, uh, to help, to assist those citizens in need. You know, so the fact that we're able to help people that can't actually maintain their properties is, is, is really good. And the volunteers, they have no, we have the Lions Club, they come, we call them and they're like, "Okay, no problem, just, we'll, we'll take care of it, give us a list." So it's, it's amazing to have those partnerships. The other one is the Odessa Pride Start of the Month, and this is recognizing those properties, you know, those, uh, commercial and residential areas where they take pride in their property, you know, they, and we wanna highlight them and let them know that we appreciate what they're doing for Odessa. So those are the things, the two that we have going on right now, and in partnership, as you can see, with the Texas Master Partners, JSA, and, uh, the Lions to help with this. And upcoming events, as I mentioned, uh, March and April is really busy, Earth Day is coming up, it's actually this month. And, uh, we're gonna, uh, announce the winners for the campus robbery as well as have a big event at the Upcycle Garden. Uh, we're gonna plant some native plants, highlight sustainability projects all over the community. Uh, we're talking Reagan, uh, Odessa College, several schools that have been doing a wonderful job, so we're gonna highlight them. Uh, we're also partnering up with the Black Chamber, uh, they're having a community cleanup this, uh, Saturday, April the 23rd at Woodson, uh, Woodson Rose Club. So if you wanna join us, it's gonna be, uh, free to everybody, you know, we're gonna have free supplies, uh, food and, uh, door prices, so it would be nice to see you guys out there. Um, and as you can see, I put some of those flyers out there so that you can see what they have been doing, the awesome job that they, they're being, uh, doing here in our community. May 7th, we do have a volunteer appreciation celebration, so we also would like for you to, uh, join us on that. That is to thank all this hard work that our volunteers have done in our community and continue to do. We can't thank you enough for your continued support, without you, your support, we couldn't do what we keep doing, so thank you so much. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, council, do you have any questions?
I've got one, is that, you know, we do have a bunch of pickups in West Texas, I think, not sure. Do you want to address the problem with people that throw their trash in the back of the pickups and drive down the road and blow it out?
We do, we have the campaigns, we have, uh, we help citizens through our campaigns, through our educational campaigns, that's, it's not, nothing other than education is the only thing we can do with them. We're also partnered with Stormwater, that they go out there and, and talk to them about things like that.
I mean, I haven't seen any PSAs or anything like that, or, you know, don't throw your trash in the back of the, or something like that, when you see stuff blow out, I mean, you're picking a lot of it up. You gotta defeat the center of the source, try to stop it at the source head, and it's gonna be doing the same thing over and over again.
So more education.
Yeah, I think more education would be good, I mean, PSAs or something, it's gonna make you aware of before you drive it back to the pickup, but we are.
And we have that, the Don't Mess With Texas is a huge campaign, and that's what we talk about.
Specifically address the beds of the pickups, it's, I understand Don't Mess With Texas, I get it.
No, no, we'll do more, but like I said, we look for.
Something I'd like to see, because that's where a lot of it comes from, plastic bottles and paper, plastic sacks.
Okay, we'll continue.
Just a thought.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item. Now, item five, consider a modification to municipal court building security, audio recording system. Mike Church.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So basically, what we have here is a project that we have gotten a supplemental for, uh, municipal court. Um, we've worked with a company called CourtSmart, um, that's kind of gotten, um, um, unmanageable, if anything, I can say. Um, the support is under par, so we looked at a different, um, solution that we were gonna go with. It's a combination of some Ricotta cameras, if you recognize, there's some, uh, we're installing around the city. Um, those come with a five-year license and also using that along with Adobe Connect for the arrangement, uh, and the security, um, functions within the support. Um, total project comes out to about $73,000, um, that's over the savings that we were to go with CourtSmart. Uh, we'd save quite a bit because that includes, like I said, five years of support, um, upon-site support that works a lot better than CourtSmart. A lot of that stuff is proprietary, we're trying to get away from that, and kind of, um, secure that across the city. So, uh, like I said, we're, we're going away from our legacy, um, equipment and going with this solution.
There's a question, what, with CourtSmart, what's the recurring cost of $7,433?
Um, that's, that's the recurring cost for the support that goes for the cameras, that goes for audio, and any time they have to come and replace, uh, equipment. Uh, like I said, that's a year-over-year cost. Uh, we'd be saving that because the $73,000 includes the three-year license for Adobe and the cost for the computers and the funding of cameras and audio.
Council, any questions? Was the time period completed?
Actually, they're waiting on us, and we get it done, um, they are doing some, um, like I said, some, some installations across the city already. We can include that with installation, and while they're here, they can get it done.
Where's the money coming from?
Uh, it is, this is part of the supplemental that was already approved, plus some of the savings that they found already in their budget.
Council, any other questions? Need to answer?
Yes.
Then move on to item six, solid waste management plan presentation, Mr. Kirk.
Good afternoon, Mayor Collins. Uh, we are pleased to have Michelle Leonard and Vida Quinn of SCS Engineers here to present findings and propose suggestions for improvements in our solid waste organization operations. SCS has worked diligently with staff to identify potential improvements for cost reductions, uh, waste reduction, and community outreach, uh, related to waste. There are several programs that can be implemented with reasonable or limited effort and cost. Uh, a few options would entail, uh, service level adjustments, uh, that, uh, provide cost reduction, but all are entirely at the discretion of the council and the service, desired service levels. Uh, we welcome Ms. Michelle Leonard and Ms. Vida Quinn from SCS Engineers to provide the presentation.
Good afternoon. Um, it's our pleasure to present to you the results of our work on the solid waste management plan. My name is Michelle Leonard with SCS Engineers, I'm Senior Vice President out of our Pasadena, California office, and I, uh, direct our sustainable materials management practice across the country.
I'm Vida Quinn, who's Director of Management Services, which is our public sector management consulting, finance, and economic practice.
So we started this project back in 2019, so we're super excited to be here today to, to present it to you. When we first embarked on that project, we met with, uh, city staff, and we talked about what does the city wanna look at in its first solid waste management plan? And these guiding principles was, uh, what was established and what has guided us all along the way in the, um, development of the plan. Increasing cost effectiveness, or the cost effectiveness of the programs that the city presently provides. Improving the efficiency of those programs and those services while maintaining the high quality of services presently offered to the city's residents and the businesses, and also looking at waste as a resource. And what are the opportunities to reduce, recycle, reuse, compost, uh, the waste that's generated in the city before its ultimate disposal in the landfill? The steps that we took in the planning process are pretty typical for a solid waste management plan, and that's primarily what I do on my everyday job. Um, the first step was to look at the existing solid waste system. So we came out here, we looked at your existing facilities, we looked at your existing fleet, we looked at the commercial service, the residential service, all of the facilities, so that we could get an inventory of what are the existing system, uh, includes, and then get an idea of what are the strengths and the opportunities within the existing system. And then we use that information to say, what are we going to need, we, the city, uh, going to need in the future? Recognizing that the city is experiencing a lot of growth, both in the residential and commercial sector. And so what future needs will the solid waste system have to meet to, again, to maintain that high level of service and, and to, um, provide adequate, uh, uh, public health and safety needs in terms of solid waste services? From those, uh, needs and from the, um, assessment of the strengths and opportunities, we developed a wide range of strategies of how those needs might be met, and then we looked at how we're gonna pay for all of that. And what is the existing financial resources that are used, uh, for the system, and what additional finances might be used? Or again, how might we be able to save some money in some of the new programs or changes to the existing services? And then out of that, we created a five-year action plan that we're gonna talk about, uh, further today. Just for a little bit of background to make sure everybody knows what we're looking at, so again, we started the project back in 2019. So our baseline here in terms of data on operations is based on that 2019 data. So number of trucks and, and, um, labor, um, as well as, you know, the, the tons that are collected from the commercial and residential sectors. However, we have updated the financials, um, in the report, and so the financial analysis, uh, that we're going to talk about, uh, does incorporate, uh, financials from, um, you know, 22 fiscal year. We put together a five-year action plan, so that's going to be 22, uh, through 2026. Um, but the whole plan looks at a 20-year timeframe, and that's very typical of a solid waste management plan, uh, to look at a 20-year horizon, but, uh, implementation in five-year increments. So just to, uh, a little bit of background, make sure everybody, uh, understands what the existing solid waste system consists of here in Odessa. The city, uh, solid waste department, uh, provides, uh, residential municipal solid waste collection, uh, to all residents, and those are, that's provided either via 96-gallon carts, which, um, are a smaller portion of the service, uh, primarily in the newer areas of the city, the, the single-family homes, uh, as well as, uh, majority are served with the three cubic yard containers, uh, in the alleyways behind the homes. Uh, single-family, um, homes, um, as well as multifamily and commercial are all serviced two times a week. Um, and then the city does serve some commercial businesses as well, but competes with, uh, the private sector, um, who also provides collection of solid waste and recycling from, uh, commercial businesses. Speaking of recycling, yeah, pretty limited here in the city, so, uh, you have your recycling center, uh, and then you have the community collection locations that are scattered throughout the city where citizens can drop off, uh, a limited number of, uh, types of, uh, recyclables. And then of course, uh, we've already left, uh, Keep America, uh, KeepaDessaBeautiful, uh, assists in the outreach and education, uh, for recycling opportunities in the city. The city also has a permanent household hazardous waste facility, uh, where again, citizens can drop off their, you know, um, used pesticides and cleaners and paints and things like that, as well as electronic waste, computers and television sets and, and other electronic waste. And then finally, um, the, uh, disposed waste stream is taken to the charred waste landfill, which is owned and operated by the public services.
Now we talk money. Um, this slide essentially represents your revenue stream. These are the average rates for your residential and commercial customers. Couple of things, we already mentioned, most everyone has a three cubic yard container picked up two times per week. For residential, that's shared, that reflects that disparity between residential and commercial, or multifamily that charges per unit. Um, most, as, as Michelle mentioned, customers are on a three cubic yard, while you do have some that are, that have 96-gallon containers, the rate remains the same. So then the next thing when we're looking at the system is then to look at the expenses. I would argue that it's just as important to really understand the cost to provide services as it is to look at your pain points and the issues you may currently have when looking at the solid waste system as a whole and assessing it. Really wanna say, okay, what are your major costs? And in looking at this, you can see in the top half of that chart that your personal services, your personnel costs, salaries, benefits, and, uh, the capital outlay, which would be any kind of vehicles, equipment, things like that, are about two-thirds of your budget. And of those, over 80% of each is regarding the collections operations. So the actual putting the bodies in the trucks and sending that into the field and then paying for the routine capital and maintenance of those. That's something to keep in mind, and you'll, you'll see as we go through this, there is a big focus on looking at how you might streamline and potentially have cost savings in the collection side of things. Just so that, we put that in terms that we can understand, the average collection route within the city costs you about $143,000 a year. And as I mentioned, it, it does involve the labor, as well as the cost to purchase those vehicles and then the cost to maintain them, including the fuel that you need for the routes every day.
So, once we gathered a good understanding of the existing solid waste, uh, system, then we began to look at, well, what are some of the options that the city could entertain, uh, to change, uh, various aspects of the system, uh, to both meet the existing requirements and the future requirements, and optimize that performance and the efficiency of the system? We developed a number of options, uh, along these, uh, four categories, communication and data analysis, collection, recycling, and organics. All again, applying those guiding principles of increasing cost effectiveness, improving efficiency, maintaining that high quality of service, and using waste as a resource. And working with the staff very closely, uh, we evaluated the strategies and we narrowed them down, um, to these, you know, four specific categories. Then, the next step in the process, uh, was to develop the five-year action plan. Those activities that the city may consider implementing over the next five years. To help this election, what we did was we modeled the various scenarios, looking at how each system or each option would decrease the demand on financial resources, on labor and, and equipment, and again, increase, uh, landfill diversion, looking at prioritizing waste as a resource, not just taking it all to the landfill. So the first, um, option, uh, is to improve data collection. Um, the city's existing data management is pretty good, uh, in terms of getting information on customer and collection stops in the GIS system. And in fact, for some of the analyses that we did, and you'll see, uh, we use that GIS information. And, um, it's very effective in responding to customer requests for service, missed pickups, uh, those types of information. But it doesn't enable right now the evaluation of the efficiency of that service and of the routes, and looking at how the city might be able to more efficiently provide the services. So this option is really, um, to train an existing, uh, city, uh, staff person to do that data analysis, and to use the existing information, augment it with additional, additional information, uh, so that we begin with the priority to look at how can the system be more efficient? We actually think that by doing that, the city might be able to reduce the number of collection rounds by two, which could then result in a cost savings to, to the city in terms of labor, equipment, maintenance, et cetera. The next option that, uh, we wanna talk about is the Odessa Waste Code. So Odessa's waste code, like many, many cities across the United States, uh, is, is old. It, you know, typically is written when the city, uh, becomes a, a city, uh, and then because other things, you know, become even more important, uh, that, that the waste code is sometimes the last thing to go. So we did a review of the waste code and we noticed a few things. One, some of the definitions are kinda outdated. So, in the past, we used to call, we used to use the phrases refuse and trash and rubbish and all kinds of ways that we called waste. Um, so we, we know that, and, and your code has it, we wanna go in there, we suggest, and revise that to update those to the more modern uh, usage of, of the words municipal solid waste and, and other, um, definitions, uh, in the, uh, waste management world. of the words municipal solid waste and other definitions in the waste management world. In terms of containment, the, the code presently talks about requiring residents to put their wet garbage in a plastic bag and their dry garbage just loose in the container. We think that the city might want to evaluate that, the wet in a bag, the purpose being to keep it from leaking out, et cetera. The city may want to look at that and revise that waste containment language. The other part of the code is the cart usage. So right now, it doesn't really specify the usage and placement of carts in regards to the newer 96-gallon carts. And so the code could be updated to address when residents are supposed to put those carts out at the curb, when they are supposed to bring them back in, so they're not staying out on the curb all week long. Some people don't think that looks great. And then, and just have those requirements in the code. And then finally, on reporting, so what we noticed was that right now, the city doesn't collect any data from the permitted private sector haulers that are collecting from commercial businesses. And we've noticed this because as we were gathering the information on how much waste is generated in the city of Odessa, there was no way for us to know, what in the private sector, what are they picking up? We know what the city collects, but we couldn't find out any information on what the private sector collects from the commercial businesses. So as part of the permit system, we think it might be a good idea to require some type of a reporting on that permitting system of at least perhaps the number of customers that they have, as well as how much waste they collect and recyclables and where that material is taken. And that's really good, important information for tracking future accomplishments. If some, if the city makes some of these changes, it's really important to be able to see, you know, are these changes making some effect, some impact on the solid waste that's generated? These particular options, really don't see, you know, much cost associated with those to be done by staff, could be implemented relatively quickly in this implementation.
Okay, I've got a quick question.
Okay, I'm a, I'm a bagger. So when you talk about containment, are you talking about the industry recommends wet bagging, wet refuse? Um, so, the, the, your code right now says to put back, split the wet waste in bags and put the dry waste. The, in terms of the disposal of that material, it's best not to have it in bags, but it's really the city's choice of whether you want to have bags to reduce the potential for leaking from the containers.
Okay.
Why is it not best to bag it?
Oh, just because of the use of the plastic bags that then go into the landfill and basically just stay there and don't ever degrade. And, and just our continuing dependence on plastic bags.
I mean, more to pass a mesquite tree could be this. Okay.
Any other question? And let me know if I'm going too fast or if you certainly answer any questions you might have. So kind of continuing along on the communication side of things, we took a look at the city's website, and much has been done, actually in the last couple of years, to enhance the, the website and even some of your own outreach and education. But as we know, much of the world gets their information from social media, whether we like it or not, and whether those of us in the room with a little bit of gray hair do that, that's where a lot of the community gets their information. And so we took a pretty in-depth look at your website and had some suggestions on enhancements to the website that would provide residents and businesses with a more convenient, easily accessible access to information regarding their collection days, regarding what to do with their recyclables, regarding what to do with their household hazardous waste, et cetera. And we, we looked at your website, compared it to other websites, and we, you know, provided some suggestions in terms of having a page for residents to go to, having a page for, for businesses to go to, et cetera, with links to state debt data, state information, but providing it a more cohesive, comprehensive access for information. The additional costs that you see here would be, you know, associated with a staff person or an outside firm helping to do that. And, and we, we think that because of that information, particularly on the recycling side and then household hazardous waste side, we could actually impact getting some of that material out of the waste stream, out of the disposed waste stream, and into either the recycling stream or into that household hazardous waste stream. And that's what that net savings is in. It would take, get that out of the stuff that's going to the landfill that you're paying to dispose of and get it into really where it should be too. We're really trying to keep that material out of the landfill. So now we're going to talk about collection. And the first one is to reduce the frequency of residential collection. Don't chew me yet, but let's just talk about this. The city is one of, you know, the few cities that still has two-time-per-week collection. And it works for the city, but there's a potential option to consider, which is reducing the frequency to one time per week. So we evaluated both looking at reducing collection on the three-cubic yard containers as well as on the 96-gallon rollout carts. And we modeled the potential costs and savings for each of these. So on the three-cubic yard container side, we actually estimated that by going to a one-time-a-week collection, we could eliminate about five routes per week. There would be some costs associated with consulting services to reroute the city and some, potentially some routing software to facilitate that. But the reduction in those five routes per week, we estimate could save the city a little over $700,000 a year, or about $1.2 million between 2025 and 2026, which is then we recommended this to be implemented. On the 96-gallon rollout cart, you know, that's a much smaller service. There's only three routes right now that serve those 96-gallon carts. We thought this program, if you so chose, could be implemented in 2024. There would be, again, some savings by reducing the number of routes from three down to one. And you can see that the potential net savings from that cost again would be associated with some help to do that rerouting and some of that routing software. Where the changing the residential collection frequency is not going to compromise the service, that's not the objective here, but really just increasing the efficiency of the city's residential collection service. So similarly, we also looked at adjusting the ratio of the three-cubic yard container system that's provided to customers. So right now, one of those three-cubic yard containers in the alleys serves about 2.6 homes. Due to analysis, that's about the average. What we would recommend is to reduce that, to increase that, I'm sorry, and have one container for about three and a half customers. So increasing it one additional customer for, per container. That would result in about a 36% increase in the customers served by that container. Most importantly, the city would be able to reduce the number of routes by four and the number of containers that would be collected. And so the associated savings over the four-year period would be about $1.5 million. There would be, again, some costs associated with getting some help to do that rerouting, to do the repositioning of the containers, et cetera. We did, this photo shows you, we did an initial analysis, again, using your GIS system, where we came up with that one container for about two and a half customers, and then looked at the potential of adding one more resident to each container, and that's the results that we came up with. We recognize that doing that, you know, there could be some confusion, maybe some frustration on the part of people. And so part of the process too would be to educate, get some outreach and education to customers to make sure everybody understands what's happening. We also recognize that it's not going to be, wouldn't be a uniform process because of the, you know, density of some of the alleys versus others. You may not be able to go completely to that, you know, one container for three and a half. That's, that, that would be an average, recognizing that in some locations, you may still need to provide, you know, additional containers. But you probably have all, those of you that live in areas of the city with that alley container, you probably have all experienced sometimes going out on your collection day to take your trash out, and that container is empty. And when the city sends that truck to pick up that container, no matter what. And so again, we're trying, we're looking at ways to make the collection system more efficient, and picking up an empty container, obviously, or a half-empty container, obviously is not efficient. The analysis would improve getting a better idea of, you know, where those empty containers may be on collection days, where they may be full or, or even overflowing, so that the balance is, you know, made appropriately.
I have a question. In the analysis, and that is true what you're saying in most cases, container could be, you know, virtually empty, one, two, on the, on the two-time-a-week route. Do your analysis take into effect even on the holidays? Especially once we just had one here before the holiday?
Right.
Did any of your analysis, did you, did you talk about that going from a 2.6 to a 3?
Yeah, we, you know, we did a very preliminary analysis and didn't get into some of those real specific details. That would be part of, of the, you know, further routing study.
What about the reductions of the routes, was that taken into account as well?
Not, I, I don't believe we necessarily looked at holiday trash.
From, from a policy perspective though, there's generally a lot you can do to accommodate that. Having 52 weeks a year where you have excess capacity is not as efficient as it would be to potentially have an additional collection day certain times per year, or to have specific programs like Christmas tree recycling, move-in box pickup, additional services that are available to those sort of one-time or one-off situations, where you could then still be able to streamline the programs that have resources in place to accommodate those kinds of things.
You're going to talk about a cultural change here. What about some of the way to the home stretch? Because I know the post office, the post office ate those. And so, and the thing is, is that, that long walk, now I'll give you an example of a four-hundred down on the opposite side, a few neighbors takes out the trash. The addition is going to have an additional 25 feet to walk dragging that thing.
I have a 13-year-old still.
The April winds, I'm picking up all the trash that I have.
Yeah. Well, and, and again, that would be part of the analysis, is to look at the average distance that someone has to walk. And in certain areas, it may not be appropriate to, to, you know, increase the number of households for containers. So again, basically just an average that we would look at. This would, you know, this also, adjusting that ratio is also, needs to be coupled with some of the other options that we're looking at, which is promoting, you know, landfill diversion and waste reduction, as well as additional recycling opportunities. Because, you know, particularly you mentioned holidays. A lot of holiday trash is what? Cans and bottles and wrapping paper and cardboard boxes and, and, you know, if we can move that amount of that into recycling, then our, our trash containers won't be as as full, particularly on those holidays and special occasions. So could segue into the next option, which is establishing a landfill diversion goal. We know from studies and work we've done across the country that establishing a landfill diversion goal really is successful in getting the reduction of the amount of waste that's put into landfills. What I'm talking about in terms of landfill diversion is not only just recycling, but it's also getting some of that green waste into a compost container. It's also looking at opportunities to reduce the amount of waste generated. I always say that if we don't generate in the first place, we don't have to collect it, we don't have to recycle it, or reuse it, or, or dispose of it. So getting that culture change, get people to think about, you know, their, their buying habits. And are there opportunities for, you know, I may be done with that bicycle, or my kid might be done with that bicycle. Instead of putting it in the trash, you know, can we, can, can someone else use that bicycle? Opportunities to repurpose materials as well, and to reduce the amount of waste that we generate in the first place. All those are what we call landfill diversion, keeping the waste from going to the landfill. The big part of that, as you mentioned there, was that culture change. And so that would be utilizing a lot of outreach and education to really kind of brand this for the city. You've done some great job just recently putting signage on some of the collection trucks that was mentioned today, but enhancing a lot of that outreach that Keep Odessa Beautiful does and others to focus on reducing the amount of waste that we generate and reducing the amount of waste that we throw away. We recommend that this would be implemented in 2023. There would be some additional costs just in terms of the outreach and, and education. Also, if some of that material does get recycled, you know, there is a cost for recycling. The city pays for the processing of that, so there would be some additional costs. But there's potential net savings from those avoided landfill disposal costs. So again, another program that would help to increase the amount of recyclables and get some of those recyclables out of the waste stream is to take a look at the community collection locations. When we did our inventory, we noted that there, there is inconsistency presently in the types of recyclables that are collected at the community location centers. Some collect cardboard and paper only, some collect cardboard and paper and cans and bottles. Somewhat inconsistent. We did a survey, conducted a survey of residents, and although it was a small sampling of the community, we found that a lot of people, you know, weren't aware of those community collection locations and/or didn't use them. And so since that and the Odessa recycle time machine, or the primary methods for recycling here, taking a look at and standardizing those collection locations could really impact the types and quantities of materials that are recycled here in the city. We estimated some additional costs associated with that. Again, some of that being, if we collect more recyclables, we'd be paid for that processing. But again, some potential savings by avoiding the landfill disposal costs of those materials. So the other option for recycling is curbside recycling. And again, during our survey of limited sampling of residents, we found that residents were generally interested in recycling. And when we asked them, not only would you be interested in it, but would you be interested in paying for it, up to $8 a month, we, we got a resounding yes from our limited survey.
I remember challenging you on that. What, what part of town do you sit?
Well, we, we published the, and we, we got the, we published the survey online and we got those people that go online. This option, what we would suggest however, is a, a subscription service. So it would be for those residents that are willing to pay for it, not, you know, not across the board, but residents would subscribe directly with a private recycling service provider for that curbside program. We estimate that we could maybe get up to about a 30% participation rate. There would be some initial costs just to get that service provider in line, but against potential savings by getting that, those materials out of the disposal and the city not having to pay for that to be disposed. So we looked at that again in terms of a subscription service for those that wanted and were willing to pay for that. So, uh, we looked at that again in terms of a subscription service for those that wanted, uh, and were willing to pay for that.
How do those cities that have those recycling, uh, capabilities, how do they separate the aluminum from the cardboard from the plastic?
Uh, they typically are taken to what's called a material recovery facility, which is a facility that has, um, uh, automation and, um, uh, sorting systems that separate those materials, either by using magnets, by using, uh, optics, by using, um, um, uh, air streams, by using, uh, uh, physical labor to separate those materials into additional.
So was that figured into eight dollars?
Because when they pick it up, they still have to take it to that facility and pay to have it processed? So it's gonna be in whatever they charge the customer.
No, it would cost the city something for this resort, for this sorting center, right?
No, this, again, uh, what we imagine was the city would, um, would, would, um, bring in a private service provider who would then operate the program themselves and take it to their material recovery facility, uh, would, would, uh, subscribe directly with the residents. So the city really wouldn't have any involvement in this, except maybe initially to reach out to some potential companies to see if there was interest in coming to Odessa and offering a subscription curbside program.
Yes, a subscription will go up.
There, there are some recent landfill developments in the area that have put in some MRF-type systems and things like that. So there, um, I mean, there's people that are, and looking in these areas.
There is a company in Midland that right now recycling asphalt shingles in their nature, keeping that out of the iron mill. And so they express interest to come here, but they're mobile. And so it's, uh, definitely an asterisk, but Midland, San Antonio. You, you're forced to use the recycling. That's a difference that's go up whether you recycle or not. And so, you know, how they basically, I'm sure that, you know, how they separate, you know, their business, but.
Yeah, um, and, and, uh, I believe in San Antonio, everyone has it. But what this is, it would be just those people that were interested who'd pay for it. As if you weren't interested in doing it, you wouldn't pay for it.
Costs would go up, less participation costs is higher.
So the net savings on this, curbside recycling, just due to the fact that there wouldn't be as much trash going into the cubic, uh, the cubic yard?
That's right. And so the city would, um, you know, avoid disposal of it, but not, um, taking that material to the landfill.
And there, just in response to that, yeah, costs do go up a lot, but there's a little bit more, and it's probably a longer conversation to stay offline, but there's a little bit more to the way, um, those markets operate and recycling sales markets that can stabilize their costs a little bit more so than, um, other expensive interior collection operations. They don't, you don't tend to see as dramatic increases a lot of times in some of those recycling costs.
And, and the good news is, is that the recycling markets are rebounding. I'm sure many of you have heard about the China National Sword and, and the impact that had on recycling. Uh, but those markets are, are really rebounding and, and what's really exciting is that they are rebounding here in the United States. So a lot of that paper is, is staying here in the U.S., um, and is, is being pult here in the U.S. And, and, you know, we're seeing new paper mills or old paper mills opening back up, um, as well as a lot of, um, work on plastics recycling. Um, and some of the major waste hauling companies are investing in, in, uh, the technologies to either convert the plastics to, uh, plastics that would be used to make new, um, plastics or converting it to energy, um, and using it as a, as a bio tool. Uh, so it's pretty, uh, exciting and I think we'll, we'll see more and more of that, uh, happening, um, over the next couple of years.
From the, from what you've seen around the country, I mean, the places as you work, how antiquated is our current system? Or is it antiquated?
Um, so, uh, in terms of the recycling?
Now, the, of all of it, I mean, I'm talking about the.
Oh, uh, again, uh, that.
Trash containers in the alleys, that kind of thing.
It's, um, it's pretty old. They have three cubic yard side loads.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be, this is not gonna be something that's very, very popular. Because most, most places have gone green. You get them to trash cans, you get them a nice container that's, that's waste and the one container that's recyclables. You roll them to the curb, separate them in your garage. They do it in most cities and we, we're so far behind the curve. And that's where a lot of our trash comes from, the people get the stuff in their containers where they slop them out, you know, they're overfilled or throw it down the side or whatever, and run it down alleys. And all of our new developments are rollouts because there are no alleys.
Yeah. These guys are doing a great job with, with the, the equipment they, they have.
Oh, I personally hate the containers, that's just my home. That's my home. I think they're ugly and they're noisy and they're antiquated.
I love that, sir.
I hate those stuff.
I love that, sir.
I think that was one of the things that we were even briefly discussing a little bit earlier today, is that, uh, one of the things you'll find is that our region of the country is, uh, probably different than perhaps the majority of the country. Uh, you're talking, you know, Odessa, Lubbock, uh, Alley Dumps, or, or Crescent. And, uh, it's just not the ongoing theme in most of the country. And a lot of that, and we're not trying to, the, it's, it's a level of service that the, the city decides to be willing. We have no problem with that. But it, when we're looking at efficiencies of cost and those types of things, you know, we've talked in the past about how our equipment, our trucks become harder to get, the side loads. They're, they're still getting, they're still a key tool and we can find them. But there aren't as many of them produced because it's not as common a collection process. And so, we were trying to evaluate what are our more, uh, what are our. There it is that we can try to make sure we're being viewed and serviced more, so that's, it's just part of the analysis.
So this, I just believe it's, Brendan's, in the twenty-first century as opposed to being back in nineteen fifty-five using alleys and, and dumpsters. I mean, I think it's just, and by any place, I spent, I did before some things happened, but relax, you just, in Palm Springs during the, during the winter. And, you know, you got a recycler, you got, you got bins, you got rollouts. Every place I've been, you've got, anywhere, rollouts in Houston, you know, my daughter's in Houston. It's, they got two ninety-six gallon, I roll them up to the curb, take them out. I mean, it's like, some, at some point, Odessa's gotta get out of the, out of the eighteenth century, then move forward. And I just think that the recycling is part of it, you know, like that. Much of the green guys, I love oil, but, you know, it's still, it's trash, and we, the trash we rid in this town is unbelievable.
And I don't mean to cut into their, their guts, more good stuff to provide you to consider. Um, but I think one of the things that I'm pleased about, there's some things that we weren't able to analyze extremely well because our data sets were not, uh, compatible to this point where we could actually make some more in-depth analysis. But so far, I don't think we, we've identified significant issues about how we operate the type of system we operate. In other words, our alley dumpster operations are not necessarily very defunct in, in the sense of the way we operate them. But they, they are, there are potentials, potentially to make, to use less money. But that's only if you wanted to go away from some of those types of things right now. And we're not trying to dictate one way or the other.
Yes, that's, that's helpful.
So just a couple more, um, options we wanted to talk about. Um, in regards to the HHW and, and E-Waste Facility, um, the existing facility is very well-run. It's open five days a week. Um, again, our, our survey said, you know, a lot of people didn't use it. Um, and we know a lot of that stuff then ends up in the disposed waste stream. Um, so, um, additional promotion of that facility on the website, on, um, to residents and businesses, to make sure that, you know, they know that facility is there, what materials should go. It's really important you keep those materials out of the landfill, um, because that's not really where they belong. There's opportunities to recycle a lot of that household hazardous waste, you know, the used oil, uh, various components of the electronic waste. Um, so, um, with some additional outreach and education, um, I think there's some opportunities to get some of that material out of the waste stream and, um, dispose of it, uh, and, and not dispose of it. Um, the, the, the cost per ton right now is pretty high, uh, so, um, because the operating costs of that facility are fixed. So we get more material of that, it lowers that cost per ton for operating it. And again, save some of that disposal fees that the city's paying and, and keeps that material out of the landfill. Um, speaking of keeping things out of the landfill, food waste. So food waste is a big part, unfortunately, of what goes into landfills right now. We don't have specific data here on Odessa, um, or even in, uh, Southwest Texas. But we know in other parts of Texas and, and in the country, food waste can be anywhere between ten and fifteen percent of what goes into a landfill. We also, and, and we also know that there's nineteen percent of the children in this county are food insecure. So this option looks at how do we get some of that edible food out of the waste stream? By changing people's behaviors, by helping them to purchase, smart, to use your leftovers, uh, to donate, uh, food that can be donated, uh, and get them to understand that, uh, the laws about donating, uh, so that we can, you know, feed hungry people and keep that food waste out of the, out of the landfill. Food waste also in the landfill generates more methane, uh, and that's, you know, another, um, um, uh, issue that we want to reduce is our greenhouse gas emissions. So, uh, with some additional education and outreach costs, um, getting, uh, we predict that we could, uh, keep about nine hundred tons out of the landfill and again, uh, realize some net savings in those landfill disposal costs. And finally, um, backyard composting. And, um, I, I, I know there's the Master Gardener Program that's operated, uh, by P. Odessa Beautiful. Uh, a master composter program is something that, uh, many communities offer, which, uh, teaches people how to compost in their backyard, uh, even some of that food waste and, and green waste and, and other organic materials, uh, and also to teach, uh, you know, their neighbors. Um, the, the city could consider subsidizing the cost of some of those backyard, uh, composters, do some additional outreach and education. And again, we, we identify, you know, some costs associated with that, but some, uh, net savings, uh, through avoiding landfill costs. While we were working on the plan, there was a few other ideas that came up that we, uh, looked at. Um, and, uh, those are the three that are presented here. So one of the things we did do was we looked at, uh, should the city, uh, would it be feasible for the city to develop a transfer station here in town? Right now, all the city collection trucks drive, I think it's fifteen miles, uh, to the Charter landfill. Uh, Charter landfill can get too busy, there's often a wait time, and, you know, the, the, the guys are sitting out there for a while. So we looked at, would it make more sense to have a transfer station, a massive facility, where the collection trucks from town would go into the building, dump their loads, um, in the building, and then those loads are, are, um, transferred into a bigger truck? So, you know, uh, less trucks, less time going up to the landfill. So we did an analysis, we looked at a couple of locations, and, but we came to the conclusion that right now it was not really economically viable for the city to do that. As things change, as growth continues here, and, uh, additional, you know, trucks going up to the landfill, uh, we would suggest reevaluating that in the future to see if that's a viable option. And the other part would be to look at if you wanted to entertain having other communities come and use it. And the private sector that's collecting here in Odessa and maybe some of the surrounding region, uh, where then you charge them a tipping fee, um, and it, uh, looking at that that could be, uh, a viable option for the city as well.
What, what made it unviable? What made the only reason?
It was just the cost to.
The facility, the operation.
Yeah, didn't pencil out with the, the costs that presently, um, uh, are, um, spent to, um, drive those collection trucks, even with some of the challenges of the landfill right now.
And that was the evaluation, how many, how many routes do we have around half twenty-one?
Well, there's twenty-seven total routes, uh, of the three cubic yard containers for, um, that includes the commercial and residential.
So you just saw the cost going up, but there was no cost savings for the, uh, the project activity as far as, um, reducing that turnaround time?
Right, right. Um, looking at the cost to, uh, design and build and operate the facility.
You have, you have that information?
Mm-hmm.
Any way you have, you can share that? Would like to look at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and then, uh, the other, um, analysis we looked at is, um, using front-end loader service. The city has kind of thought about this for a while in terms of, um, investing in front-end loaders. Those are, you know, you've probably seen in the commercial, uh, businesses, uh, the ones that, you know, Republic Services or others operate. So it's the one that's got the, the forks in the front and lifts the, the, uh, the container up in the front, as opposed to the ones you have on the side. Um, the, um, opportunities for there is that, uh, those can, uh, collect a bigger container. Um, they are a little bit more modern of a fleet and so have less, um, you know, uh, challenges sometimes with getting parts and equipment and new trucks, uh, as Tom indicated. They haven't had any problems, but, you know, there's a lot more front loaders for sale than there are, you know, the, the side loaders. So, uh, with some potential savings associated with that. Um, and, and they could generate additional revenue if the city was able to provide that service, um, and, and be, um, uh, on a level playing field with the, the private sector. So, uh, again, a future consideration, uh, that you might want to think about down the line. And similarly, is looking at, uh, at doing a franchise for your private haulers that are presently providing that commercial collection service. So right now you just have a permit system, and again, we don't collect any information from them on customers or tonnage. And they don't pay anything to the city, uh, for really for that wear and tear that they're, you know, using your city streets, uh, collecting that waste. And so many communities, um, have a, a commercial franchise.
It's all right.
Um, have a commercial franchise system where you select one or maybe, uh, a few haulers, and, and they are the only ones that are allowed to collect from the commercial businesses. And then they provide it, uh, they pay a franchise fee to the city, uh, which then can be used to, uh, to, uh, fund some of your solid waste programs, um, on an ongoing basis. So some of the future considerations, um, outside of this five-year plan. But in summary, uh, we'll show you, uh, what we, uh, working with, uh, city staff came up with in terms of the schedule, uh, for the implementation of these various options. So in the, the first year, um, it's that data collection and analysis, um, uh, option, updating the, the municipal code, uh, enhancing social media, and then, um, uh, focusing on that, um, uh, community collection locations to hopefully increase those, the opportunities for recycling and getting more people and more materials into, uh, the recycling, uh, containers. Uh, and then in year two, in twenty twenty-three, um, uh, looking at, uh, doing that alley, uh, container adjustment, uh, providing education about, uh, wasted food, um, establishing that branding of landfill diversion goals, which we hope then will change people's behavior and get them to use their collection, uh, community recycling containers, get them to not waste their food, um, and, and also, um, at the same time promoting the use of the HHW E-Waste Facility. Uh, in year three, um, looking at reducing the frequency of collection, uh, both for the alleys and, um, uh, the rollout part. Uh, and then in year four, uh, twenty twenty-five, um, further exploring maybe those, that franchising that I was talking about of the private waste collectors, encouraging people to, to do that backyard composting, providing some incentives for that. And then finally, um, you know, uh, implementing, uh, that subscription curbside recycling program, doing that, uh, waste shed analysis for the transfer station to see if that's a viable option. And then, um, it, further evaluating, um, the city doing, uh, front-end loader service for the commercial sector. So that's the implementation schedule.
I'll stop on you again. Um, because this is ultimately what it comes back to, and it's especially, um, your, for your part, looking at how that affects the residents that you represent. So while I spared you the extra slides here, we're telling you what goes into this. This is not a scratch calculation dividing costs by the number of residents. This is actually a holistic look at your entire solid waste operations over a multi-year projection period, both before and after the assumed implementation of these projects. So there was some pretty extensive work done with solid waste to look at your existing fund balances, your capital program, your vehicle and equipment replacements, your staffing levels, your general growth in the system over recent years, and sort of taking an average of that and looking forward, uh, talking about the types of growth that you had expected and your master plans, and really coming to what we thought was a realistic projection of the system as it is. As you can see, your rates need to go up, but not significantly. Um, they're a fairly well-managed utility. You're facing inflationary-like increases, uh, annually. The difference is when we employ some cost savings, while the trajectory will. The difference is when we employ some cost savings, while the trajectory will still go up in the long term, you've lowered that overall level of increases, and you flatten that trajectory just slightly, because now as you're encouraging additional diversion, you're seeing less cost increases in some of those programs. So over time, you're going to see, and this is what we're comparing here, that cost of the average resident going out into the future is going to be less and may not be as increasing as dramatically in some of those later years as it would be if you didn't do anything to try and streamline your operations. So that's all that was really meant to show. And then that's all it is.
So that include, concludes our formal presentation, and would be glad to answer any questions right away.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Will we see this for adoption at the next council meeting?
So you already have it for Tuesday?
Yes.
So, okay, then I've got questions. Can we put up the last?
Okay, so let me, just go on the first one. Because I thought we were just going to look at this as a study, I didn't know we were already looking, we only had the point of implementing this.
I'm sorry, Tom, was that right?
We, we have it ready to go if you, if you were wanting to, if it's what you wanted to proceed with. We can open to the discussion and if there's things that you want to change in terms of that.
There are some, there are, because in the first, chemical back to slide, right there, we, we had the implementation plan from year one to... Okay, update Odessa Waste Code. Okay, so the thing is, we, we made an analysis, is that we were outdated on the wording. This is a charter, so basically that guides of how we implement, you know, the law here in Odessa, Texas. So it's not just a, a, a modernization of the word, the word actually has meaning, has cause and effect. So, you know, the thing is, we haven't seen the list of what you want to change, but how will it affect of how people are able to dispose? So do we wind up getting to a point, my concern is here, that, you know, when we discuss about what drives, that there are things that are not supposed to go into the container? So by changing the charter, do we change also what the residents can and cannot do, and do we increase the possibility of them being in violation and fines compared to what we've been operating on? The enhancing social media, I mean, I think we can handle it, you know, we've already had the Odessa Keep Beautiful as far as the department, we can do that. The other one, standard size, right-sized community collection locations. You know, the thing is, is if we, we go ahead and implement this, that means we're putting all this into action. We're, we're not going to spend this money in this analysis and not do that. That means we're going to consider taking twice-a-week routes to on, consolidating routes, that's going to happen. You know, everybody said, "No, no, no," it's going to happen. I mean, I know everybody gets calls when, you know, people don't get service, or one day the service. I mean, man, they're harder than heck, and then when the holidays come in, those are the worst. You know, this whole weekend, I, you know, also outside of, you know, talking about the animal shelter was, people were complaining, now, they were complaining to me, but I was, I was analyzing what was going on the next door, and that's wherever it goes to dogs. People were complaining about not getting services to me, and so that's, that makes them harder to take the trash down the alleyways. And so, you know, just want the council to, to be sure that those are the needs that we're going to have to, to do, we implement this. You know, it's like every muster plan, you know, you change the wording, everything's going to rotate to, to, to go to that. And so I, I, I don't, I want, if we're going to go down this path, I'd sure like to read a little bit more, be a little more informed. I thought we were discussing a, a, a information, you know, then like I pretty talked about when they were looking at an analysis, the analysis, which I understood, was looking at the, the first, the last item in 2022, and so if we're able to keep more efficient in the routing system.
That, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that, in 2022, the standardized the right size, that, those are the community recycling?
Yes, ma'am, that's it.
Okay, so not, not impacting persons' twice-a-week collection in their...
Yes, but the thing is, is that that is, that is part of this, you know, this, you know, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, you know, all that's in your plan. Yeah, you know, so it's not whether it's, you know, this year or next year, but it is, you know, in consideration. And that's what I'm saying, if we're going to go down that route, I want to make everyone a little bit more informed.
Yeah, there, I made a mistake, I want people to realize this was a discussion, and it's important to understand, for the council to understand the relevant points of the plan, and decide which ones are completely more feasible.
Yeah, it makes more sense.
But, but to your point, we'll provide you a white paper on, on the plan as well as this additional information. We can bring this back at a subsequent work session, and to the other staff, we can decide what parts of this plan we want to implement and when, and moreover, if there are any parts that you don't want to implement.
Okay.
Ultimately, as we said earlier on the presentation, it really is about the service level that we as a community want to provide.
Yeah, that, that makes me feel a lot...
One thing we do, so when we're talking about the burden and the codes and everything, is there are like some guidelines that, you know, in bullet points for us that we're going to change, that we can...
Yeah, so we'll, we'll take the existing ordinance and update that, like, much like what Google typically does, so we'll show you what the changes are to the ordinances. And we're talking about ordinance changes for...
There's, there's, aside from that, you know, there's sometimes we run into an issue where someone's doing something with the trash, and it's not, not maybe appropriate or not what we really want to happen, but our ordinance doesn't necessarily speak to that specific item. And so we don't have identified in the ordinance specifically, we want to change this at this point, that would certainly require, and, and I, I don't want to, because I probably make this a clear clue, is that we aren't trying to push this through on you, and we don't want to do that. This, we want to do what y'all want us to do, which means...
Can you send us, send us the, this, this higher coordination sheet? Follow this and review it?
The other thing to keep in mind when updating that language too, is, it's been known the last time it was, it was updated, you might have things that at this point are prescribed or something that you know, um, do as a service.
Oh, yeah.
We recently had to update city charters because solid waste was defined in there in a way that they were in violation of their own city charter. So these are the kind of things we really try to review and say, if this isn't valid anymore, then maybe that language needs to be...
Let me just, let me just sum it up this way. The, the playbook is, the more off, you're probably violating, okay? And so would that exist?
Definitely. You're defining solid waste heavily in a charter, things can definitely change over time, because you're defining day-to-day operations.
We just want to be, I, I, I don't, I'm actually, I'm actually want to be clear-cut, you know, if you're, you know, looking at that diagram, because there is, and I said that charter needs to be addressed, so...
And a lot of these topics that are on here are not real specific in a way that, you know, if this is a, what's called kind of a master plan, the item itself needs to be identified in specifics as you go forward, right?
Counsel, any other questions? We completely, you got to have a handle on, on this situation.
I want to work the state, say, and talk about dogs.
Why do you want to know about dogs? Dogs were the cost of adoption, your boys.
Let me tell you right now, with the cost that we're getting, you know, continues to go over, we're all going to be back into the seventeenth century.
Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, okay, so we're going to...
I have seven consider approval of the infrastructure grant in a Little McJack properties in Miss Hallmark.
You're very correct, and my husband loves you for that, so yes. Good afternoon and happy Taco Tuesday. I'll be quick. We are here to talk about infrastructure and facade grants for Little McJack properties. That's located at four eleven North Grant Avenue. They submitted their report requesting an infrastructure grant through the Downtown Encinitas Grant Program, and it was reviewed and approved by the ODC on four fourteen. This is the old Gene Collins Building. Little McJack will be doing business as McJack General Store.
See, this is where the job, right?
Correct, so Mr. Harich had purchased it, and then we use, this couple bought it front of him, so just for full transparency, Mr. Harich is on the downtown review. He recused himself from this one in particular, so he was not a part of that pushing through process, so...
You said this was a business?
Yes, so it's a, it's a retail specialty shop with an emphasis on Christmas decor, so lots of cute stuff. They've been in business since 2019, and it's no brick and mortar, it's mostly been social media and ran through Instagram. They're very excited to have a brick and mortar, and so they purchased the building and are applying for this grant. So on the infrastructure, they are in tier one, so for infrastructure, it's a fifty-fifty split. So they would, the total allowable, or the total covered by the grant would be the ninety-two thousand eight eighty. If you split that, the grant would cover four hundred, I mean, sorry, forty-six thousand four hundred and forty. The other fifty percent of that, plus what's not covered, would be a total owner covered of one hundred nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-six thousand and some change. For a total investment, an infrastructure of a hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars and forty cents. They're going to totally remodel inside and out, they got their two quotes that are attached. It does have a, a status, so that's going to be abated, and that, those quotes are attached, and they're ready to get started, and hoping the project will only take about four months to complete. So that would be on the infrastructure. On the facade, again, it is a, in tier one, so that's an eighty-twenty split for this grant, up to twenty-five thousand. So the total project is thirty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand would be covered by the grant, ten thousand would be owner investment. So, any questions on that?
Counsel, any questions from Ms. Williams?
So they'll be open for Christmas this year.
They're, they're definitely hoping, yes. They're ready to rock and roll and think that it'll take about four months to finish the project.
Okay, when did you change to Williams?
Okay, so Hallmark is not maiden name, Williams is not married name, I got married in 2018, but then the pandemic hit, and that's what I say anyway, but I'm just lazy and I haven't gone, and then I started this job, and so it's just going to be a real pain to change my, everything. I know, and my husband hates it, but I just, now I just say, "Well, I, I already have my, my city email, so..."
I'm sorry, this is going to be good.
It's, it's going to be a great addition to downtown, it's something new and interesting. She worked for Ms. Casey's for several years, so it's kind of that vibe, but they're also going to have year-round things, so it's something that will bring people into the downtown footprint and encourage, you know, on your lunch hour to go pick up a gift or go shopping, Saturdays and on weekends, bring them down here to have lunch and go shopping, so...
Any other questions?
That's it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You went ahead and knocked out both presentations on that, right?
Thank you. I told you I'd be quick, it's Taco Tuesday.
Okay, I'm, I'm just going to consider counsel appointee salary increases. Mr. Thompson?
It's Ms. White, not Neil or Ms. White.
I would be glad to. I would like to make a recommendation, and we discussed the salary adjustment for the council appointees, and the city manager, the city attorney, the city secretary, and the judges. My, what I would like for my fellow council members to consider is the same proposal that we gave for the other reports, and that being a four percent salary increase plus the twelve fifty one-time amount. I recommend that we have that effective at the same time with the others' reports.
Yeah, I basically, you know, I basically agree, I tried to bring that up at the last council meeting, because they, they sound the same, same inflationary problem as everybody else does, and, and I know they're all in a lot of hours, and it just, it just makes sense, I mean, inflation is what it is, and there's no way we're going to stop it, not in a while, and I know that, you know, I still know and watch what things are costing, and they got families to, to raise just like everybody else and to live, and I just believe it's appropriate, because they, again, they missed that three percent year before last, it's no different, it's just the numbers are just a little bigger, so, and I'm sure, I feel confident that we can afford to do that, and I feel great about doing that, I think we should.
So, you want to go ahead and give a comment?
My comment is, when are the evaluations?
October.
The only thing I'd say about that was that the evaluations don't necessarily rate increases or, or anything, there's no guarantee of that.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And that's six, that's six, not always, it's six months, so it's kind of, that's a long, you've heard, it's nothing.
No, I'm okay with that one.
Can you get, can you get kind of an analysis of what, what we got for the, for the J D employees, what, what it would cost? Not so we could get this...
Had it for, had it for the meeting?
Yeah.
Had a little chance that we could get four...
Hands on the phone.
Are you going to sleep?
Yeah.
I really just feel that there was not a whole lot to discuss. We talked about evaluations, and we did the other employees, you know, based on their evaluation or anything, I think they're effective, the council, council appointees are effective despite the other, and since we have a little evaluation for the others, this is something that we want for all employees, and I believe they are employees, and so... And, you know, my, and I do understand on evaluations and, and that, however, with our council appointees, if they're not performing to satisfactory level, there is never a reason to wait for an evaluation for them. And so, you know, that's why that was not a concern, I guess, of my avoiding poor evaluations, because, once, that needs to be addressed immediately with this issue.
So what I'm understanding is there is not consensus, go move forward and put it on the council agenda, and we'll go ahead and move forward as consensus, and then we consider this number to be there, and number that you have to hand out.
Oh, Cindy, Cindy, Cindy.
No, I just wanted to comment that payroll is this Friday, so we were able to do the other employees to make it effective on that pay period, with this not going until next week, then that puts them another pay period behind, just to your effect that you were asking for it to be at the same time period.
We can write this, right? We can catch up with it.
Don't like Cindy, you're interrupting.
Okay, Cindy, so I have even more of that. I saw that look.
Okay, any other final discussion of this item? Okay, we're going to move on to, I intend to move from table discussion, approve amendments to Article Four dash seventeen video gaming. We'll do the discussion, you make a motion for table, you make the motion to remove from the table?
Yes, sir, I make a motion to remove from the table the discussion of the limits article four dash seventeen video gaming.
Oh, no, that was awesome. You want to repeat that again?
Okay.
I want to do that one.
So we have a motion, and I got Councilmember White, second by time is Councilmember Sprouse, to remove from the table, I intend, all in their case, and I, all opposed in case, the motion passing unanimously, I intend to be back on the table for discussion.
Mayor and City Council, regarding this item, Article four seventeen video gaming, legal has been asked for their original recommendation. We've been discussing game rooms often and a lot, and so we were just asked to go back and to give our legal recommendation, and then we can go from there regarding this item. So legal's, labels' recommendation is to, I think we were, we were charged with going out looking at interlokal for other cities, and our, our recommendation ultimately would be to enter into an interlokal with the county and use their authority to regulate and enforce the games. That would be our first recommendation. If council wishes to amend, they get the video gaming ordinance section four seventeen, our recommendations are the hours of operation, change them Sunday through Thursday, eight AM to eleven PM, and on Fridays and Saturdays from eight AM to twelve AM. We would have the grandfather clause in for existing facilities until their permit is revoked, lapped, suspended, or denied renewal. We would, we recommend requiring a site plan and... We would, we recommend requiring a site plan and limiting, um, the video gaming establishments to fifty video gaming devices in operations on the premises. And those are legal's recommendations.
Would, on, on that, on limiting the fifty, would you worry me set the more not to exceed fifty? Because if it's a small building, we wouldn't want to think and make a creative game changes.
Yes, we could do that.
And that would be, instead of us having an ordinance, we would write in with the interlocal agreement with, with Ector County, correct?
If we enter into an interlocal agreement with Ector County, we could rescind the city's ordinance.
Right, and that way, that just, um, that broadens the scope of what, what Ector County is about to.
Yes, we would be able to.
To include a city like this, uh, Ector County.
Yes.
Right?
We would be able to use their authority, which is a lot broader, um, than cities' authority.
Okay. Um, were y'all able to check with other municipalities to see what a common practice or anything?
Yeah, interlocal agreement is the common trend with cities. Um, in fact, we were even able to, um, speak with the city of Fort Worth. And we asked them what they were doing in light of the recent opinion that came out and uh, they commented that they are still in an interlocal agreement with Tarrant County and the, um, the attorney said that it was working great. And that's what they're doing. They're not changing anything in light of the most recent opinion that came out in their jurisdiction.
When, when they say it's working great, what does that actually mean?
All I can tell you is they said it was working great to her, um.
So we don't know, we don't, we don't actually have any numbers, but it went from where they were in twenty twenty to where they are now.
Uh, Mayor, we don't have anything recent, but we were able to find on, on their website and their open records where they have a memo from the, um, city manager to the city council. Let me, can we talk to that? And we can send that memo out to council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So yes, um, I was able to locate a memo from the city manager, Mr. Cook, to his city council. Um, this memo was dated August of twenty twenty, so it is a little bit updated. Um, but it was dated August of twenty twenty. Their interlocal went into effect with the county in December of twenty nineteen. And so in his report to the city council, um, there was a sentence, there was a statement that there have been no new game room permits issued since the interlocal and since they were, um, enforcing the county's ordinance. So in an eight month period, um, there were no new game room permits that were issued. On the back of this memo also, um, there's a list of how many arrests and how many, um, citations that they were able to do based off this ordinance as well.
And, and what was the date on that, on that memo?
August twenty, I think it was August fourth, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, and when was the lawsuit and case heard in, uh, Texas or Chronicle?
I do not.
So what I, so the thing is that, you know, the memo might be able to been working great at that time. But the thing is, they still, it's, they still were not very able to, to do the increases of the fifteen hundred or two thousand, if I'm correct, because of the lawsuit.
But we just talked to the, the, uh, Mr. Mosley, who's the, I think, senior assistant city attorney, um, last week on Thursday, and he said that it continues to work great. So in their assessment, it does continue to work great, and I would imagine that that's permit, uh, number of game room permits, um, and that's reflected in, in this memo.
And, and, and even though they're not, uh, you know, they're still working around, you know, to produce a decision. That's why I ask, you want the definition of great? The great from what, ever previously or great now that they're on the, you know, the hammer from the, uh, which is your court? I, I, I don't know, that's just.
They haven't done anything.
I know, I know they haven't done anything. I'm just saying, just trying to define what great is. And the thing is, it's a perception, you could be easily pushed to the point that, hey, we're gonna continue to permit a tax and elicit gambling in our lives. And so, I mean, the council can decide where he wants to go. So I, that's, I'm just asking a simple question. And, and I, I'm not gonna get the answer. We don't have the answers. It's just what is great. I just want everybody to, to keep that in mind, right, to provide the definition.
Thank you.
Can you freshen my memory on what the county, the county's new order?
They have, we have the ordinance. They got the ordinance right here.
You've got to give it.
Come back and forth any time.
We can.
Did you bring yours?
I, I did not bring my memo, but I do have the ordinance in front of me.
Yeah, right here, here, I mean, this, this is what I need here. What, what section, um, we have several, and it's pretty, it's pretty lengthy, so we got basically definitions, section one is definitions. Then we got inspections, operation, examination, any H and county or premise of motor vehicle, licensee or applicant, video game devices related equipment. I mean, we can go through the whole thing.
I just wanna make sure that we have the fifteen hundred fees in there, the, uh.
Yes, that is in there.
It is, it is in there. Um, we have a licensee fails to file contribution, one, a fixed forty five days, license expiration, county. It says the civil penalty two hundred and fifty per thousand, five hundred, they got that, uh, now we're in here, thousand, so.
I think it might be hours of operation may be different to all we're trying to do.
That, that may be, that may be right.
That may be, that's what I'm thinking is that they have, they have twenty four hour.
Well, the difference also here is when, well, we have another licensing and operation fees. Uh, I have a license fees, item one upon application for non-rebundable annual fee of a thousand should be paid by the applicant. This fee is based on cost process and application investigation of the license. The provision does not apply to current license status removal of the license. So county is private at a thousand, correct?
Yes, the county.
We're doing twenty five hundred for the premise.
Correct.
And so that's different right there.
Well, so I do have a question for you, Council. Are you asking what's different from Ector County's ordinance, their old ordinance, to their new ordinance? Are you asking what's the difference between Ector County's ordinance and our current ordinance?
What's the difference between their, the county's most updated current ordinance, they have one right now, and the ones that were, the amendments that we proposed?
Okay, like for the.
The modified one.
Yeah, right, right. On theirs, in the, uh.
So the county doesn't have that, the, the limited hours.
Right.
Yes, yes, they do, they do.
The imaginary license establishment, they're only allowed to operate eight AM to seven PM on Sunday through Thursday.
It's identical to.
Yeah, so you, you do have it in there. And then Friday and Saturday is eight AM to twelve, twelve, uh, twelve AM. You do have the fifteen hundred feet from the pre-existing video game establishments. They do put into contention for pre-existing video game licenses such as the location expiration suspend, re, uh, revoke, um, no va- no video game establishment be allowed to have more than fifty video game machines in operations on the premise. So they do limit that, no more.
And one other thing is, uh, on your sheet there, that has been proposed by Council in the past is to limit them to light industrial or heavy industrial. The county does not have that.
Yeah, right.
We don't have that.
Correct.
So that's, that's a good question, Jim. Okay, if we adopt, if we, if we adopt their, their interlocal, can we put that kind of a thing in a separate ordinance or is a, because I would, I could see us separating the fee, the fees, they permit fee outside of the county, we permit fee inside of the county. And, and limit them to where we want them to go. Or can we not do that? Do not make those? Council can choose to do it in this way.
So what, what would be your legal recommendation on that?
See what I'm saying?
Uh, legal's recommendation would be to, um, enforce Ector County's existing ordinance. This was something that, um, all of the, all of the suggestions, um, here, all of the amendments that they made were our suggestions in the, at the beginning.
In the letter that we sent.
Right.
And they made.
They made all of them.
No, we made all, we, we added the light industrial and heavy industrial because of our, you know, and this, this is something that, uh, the Fort Worth, uh, chose to do. And, you know, this is where the lawsuit came in.
Okay, so that caused the lawsuit?
Well.
Or partnered?
No, the whole, though, just, just passing the ordinance to regulate in, uh, the, the, the game rooms, they didn't want to be regulated. So it wasn't one particular thing, it was the whole thing.
Right. Well, here's, here's kind of where I am on this whole deal. I, I firmly believe that we should outlaw the game, but you know that, brother, if I'm here. We're on the same page. However, I think we're, we've been too fast to do it today. Number one, I don't think Chief Kirby's geared up to do it that fast. And I, I have a sensitivity towards his department and the police department. So I suggest that we, that we, we adopt the interlocal agreement as to switch, to such time as this moves back to the Supreme Court. You think it will, I think it will, legal thinks it will in next week.
Yes.
And when the Supreme Court makes a justification, then we can be ready. As it goes through that process, we can be ready to make that move and shut them down if that happens. And that's what I'd like to see, is see that way we're not knee jerking and causing a lot of extra work for our people and, uh, giving everybody time to adjust, because it's, it's a big change.
I'm, I'm kind of, I agree with you and just, I'm with the same. I, I'd like to not have gaming. I don't want massage partners that are working outside of the scope of a true professional masseuse. Uh, there's a lot.
Also the nail salons, I mean, and the gaming rooms are in the back. I mean, I was looking at some of the, and I'm like, that's not a game room, that's a nail salon. I mean, I feel like I'm gonna do that on my.
And so I, you know, I don't want them, I don't want them here, but I want us to do what is, what is legally appropriate to get us where we need to go. And that will also give the police department the opportunity to utilize the nuisance abatement if it's deemed necessary, correct?
Correct.
The other, the other thing I'll mention too is if you look at that list of, of violations from each of those locations, they're the same kind of violations and everybody, they're the same type, which is suspicious person, a handgun here. You know, if somebody gets duped out, nine one one called, an alarm, something, and they're always at two, three, four, five o'clock in the morning. I mean, that's why nobody ever hears about them. And that's where, that's where all the work's coming in. So if we can do that and just wait for the Supreme Court to say so, of course, to make it defend, then I think we're in a lot better position and, and we can move forward with, with a plan and not be a danger.
Can we pose this question? So, the council's looking at adopting the interlocal, what we requested for the county to do so. Is this inclusive or exclusive of the light and heavy industrial?
Exclusive.
It'd be exclusive.
Exclusive, okay. That's, I just wanna make you sure, that's on the record.
That's, that's, yeah.
Okay, so now, the other thing is, is that, are we limited to fifty, uh, game room machines? What about a limit on the, uh, the, the, uh, the premises themselves about the permitting? What are we at right now?
Twenty five.
No, the number, and that's, that's, that's what we're char- that's what, that's what the city's charging for premises.
The number of gamers allowed?
Talking about the premises in itself, what, where are we at, twenty six, twenty seven?
How many game rooms do we have, how many permits? I think the last number was twenty six to twenty seven, twenty seven.
So here's the other question. Is there a limit on that or are we just gonna continue to, to permit? Because there's no, the thing is, is that, right in here, your grandfather, those are gonna exist, you're sending them, you, you, and they're gonna continue to operate, and they're gonna continue to operate, you know, both, and, and, and here's the question, either, you, you, they can choose, you're either unconstitutional or, or nonetheless. We're gonna continue to permit, we're gonna continue to tax, and we're gonna continue to collect. So in the last report that we got, as in the first three months, we were at six hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. So we're on a fast track. If those numbers continue to get, we're gonna be way up there. So, you know, I just wanna make sure that this is a consensus moving forward for Tuesday, if this is what the council wants to adopt.
The other question I would have is, for legalists that could, could we adopt, here's the question. Can we adopt, do they're welcome with the county? And at the same time, put them all on, on the new ones, and just ban the existing ones.
Doesn't the county have it limited to forty? Is that not current?
No, the, the, the county, in their, to.
On the number?
No, they, they, they limited to the number of the county.
Yeah, well, we're, much of all that's in the county.
What's their, what's their limit in the county? What's their limit in the county?
I believe it's unincorporated.
Correct. Mayor and Council, it's limited to the unincorporated areas of the county, which includes the city limits. So their cap on the number is limited.
So can we not make that over by ourselves? Because they say unincorporated.
But if we adopt the county, then we can, that's, 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 uh.
We incorporate, so we can't put forty on it, because we're incorporating.
Or is that what you're saying? If, if we adopt the county's ordinance, then we can't make any of our changes. We can't even make our changes.
Correct. That would be against legal's recommendation. It would be limited to what Ector County has already put in place.
But how, but how does that one provision apply to the city? That's all I'm asking.
Which one?
They limited it to forty inside, in the unincorporated areas, or fifty, whatever the number is.
Right. So it wouldn't apply to us, so it would, it wouldn't be enforced.
So ours is unlimited.
So if the rate was on at one point, the county would have less than we would.
Yes, exactly. Well, they, all within the city.
Yeah, exactly. And what it does comes, it's just gonna make, it's just gonna make, make it worse.
The question Mr. Thompson's asking is, can we limit the number of establishments within the city?
We can, if we amend our own ordinance and make our own ordinance. We can, we can, we can have that in there, in our own city's ordinance. But if we adopt the counties, then we can't. We're answering there. Now, we would have to, we'd have to.
Is that true? No, no.
I mean, we could take that request to the county, um, when we're working on the interlocal agreement, that's something we could, um, propose to the county. We've also mentioned that it didn't seem like the, the council was reasonable, um, but all cities did not rescind their ordinance, but it seemed as if they, the city of Odessa wanted to rescind the ordinance if we entered into an interlocal with the county.
Well, that was a formative.
Okay, what if we, what if we just, in the interlocal, we're gonna just say, just say, hey, county, we'd like you to add this, this, this two mortgages. One, you limited to forty in the unincorporated areas and, of the county, and you limited to forty or fifty unincorporated it, and then the city limits it has to be in the light industrial area.
We could.
I could propose that, um.
It's not gonna damage them any.
I, I can't speak for the county, um, but we can definitely propose that, uh, now that that's.
Because the city is in the county.
Correct, so we can propose that.
So we have unincorporated and incorporated.
Right. So we can propose that to the county, um, and see if they are able to add that, uh, that last amendment to their ordinance.
Yeah, so it sounds like to me that the way they say that is that in the unincorporated areas, you're limited to forty, and the incorporated part of the county is limited to forty or fifty, whichever the number is. And inside the incorporated area, that's to be in the light industrial area. That's all right, we won't change. It seems like a simple change for me. Until such time as we get a Supreme Court. And then I'll be back to your room.
I was just, did that happen, that change? If you have a recommendation to the county and a response back, I'll.
I spoke, I spoke to Mr. McClendon last week before this meeting, before Tuesday's council meeting. Um, and he was still willing to work with us, um, and was following up on where we, where we stood. Um, I did tell him that at that time last Tuesday, I did not have the direction from council to continue on the interlocal, so that those negotiations and that conversation has ceased, but he did give me a call and he is still, I think, is something that we could move along pretty quickly. I told him that we're waiting on an outcome from council and then moving forward, we would be in contact with him on where that leaves, uh, him and I.
Okay, so we could, uh, on the direction?
Yes. I wonder if, if they are, had a reservation about the terminology of the light industrial, um, whatever it was.
Like, like, yeah.
Yeah.
This will be the first time that they've heard that, because we did send that letter to them and they did adopt, um, those changes that we asked.
But if they, if they had a concern about that, if perhaps they wouldn't just change their wording on the forty, on the limit of forty, um, establishments throughout.
The entire county.
Yeah, and include the incorporated area.
Incorporated and unincorporated, yes. That'd be okay too. I can live with that.
Yeah. Because that would, I would, I have no idea how many are in the county, but I would guess that would put us pretty close to a max.
And that number of the county exceeds no more, to be no more than thirty, is what you're. And that number of the county exceed no more, to be no more than thirty, is what the county.
I mean, I don't, yeah.
And that's all you have, you have one job. I mean, that's a great idea, though, just, all you say is the county incorporated or unincorporated, change that one for. We can really give off with light industrial, I can read that along for right now, till we see what happens with the, with the courts.
And that would be best.
That's real easy, that's a real easy fix. The city is the county, the county is the city.
If, if they would consider and if they were able to just include that, because I would, I would think that would be more beneficial to us anyway, because than the existing.
Either of them, in both parts.
The existing would be recommended by that.
Interout, same.
And what would that process mean? They would have to go back. They have to adopt.
Yes, yes. So, so is, is, is Legal clear on your direction?
Yes, the only thing that I would like to clarify is, do you want us to ask for a specific number of game rooms incorporated? Do you real, do you really want us to ask for fifty for incorporated, or do you want a number for both?
My number, my number is zero. I just want that on the record.
Suggest that we ask them to remove the unincorporated from the verbiage, and then it would include, uh, exeter.
Yeah, it would. So fifty total in the county?
Right.
Both incorporated.
Right, and we've got twenty-seven, they've got a certain number, so we may be real close to fifty, yeah, but that's all a problem.
Yeah, but it, you know, really exists. So let's talk about time, let's talk about time. So you're gonna go back to them, this item's not gonna be on the Tuesday's agenda. So how much time are we adding to this process?
I'm not certain. Um, I can reach out to Mr. Mc, Mr. McClendon was just waiting for us.
Yeah.
And so with this direction, um, we can definitely go and have that conversation, um, tomorrow, as early as tomorrow, to try and work something out.
What's the issue with sport?
There's.
There's city council, um, Ms. Smith with the Odessa American, said that the county is already at thirty, right?
Thirty.
So that would be fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
That freezes it.
But, yeah.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't freeze it, because this is why I'm asking about the time.
It doesn't freeze it, in fact.
Well, the reason is that, because we don't have something in place that limits it. The county right now is just doing the unincorporated, so they're, they're.
We're asking for a change, though, one, one more.
Understand that.
Okay, so fifty, twenty-seven's fifty-seven, Aaron. Okay, you take out the ver, change the verbiage, that's a little to consider.
Will that, will that happen? You see, we don't know, right? So currently, they can continue to ask for permitting, and they'll be permitted because they're not at that fifty number.
Because they're not a set number right now.
Exactly. Because they haven't, they haven't, the, the county, in the county unincorporated areas, there are thirty, uh, 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 facilities that house, uh, the, 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 the main machines. So they're still, they still can permit another twenty facilities, because the thing is, is that they're limited on the unincorporated areas to fifty. We don't have a limit, so the timing, as we go back and forth, which is, you know, we, we, we have the process, and then once we read it, we have a second reading, then we have, what, a thirty-day, you know, moratorium, and then so it, it pushes down the line. And so it's until the final reading, and then the, the, after the final reading, I think, is another thirty days, uh, then it goes into effect. That's when everything starts going, that's when, uh, the limitations are happening. So what's gonna happen is, the action that we're taking right now, you're gonna see these game rooms already, because how many, how many right now do we even have in the pipe? I know that one, or the forty second in Dixie, you know, it's already in the pipe, you know, that we've already done the inspections. It's already in the house, so the thing is, they're just gonna continue until we get there. You know, so time is on our side. So the thing is, is that everything's gonna get on screen, and so, you know, our hands, our hands are tied, regardless. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna wind up going into doing the continuing permitting, things of that nature. We can set, we can set the, the, the number, you know, within the city and everything, but the thing is, guarantee that, gosh, this thing's gonna get on expressway. It's gonna happen. There is nothing stopping it. And so I, I just spent the, to date today, I spent, I mean, owner called me and just gave me the hope, the complete economic benefit of these, these game rooms. I just sent this.
Who called?
It was a, a, a property owner that leases out to the game rooms, not, not, not.
Robbed me the room.
He told us.
You, you have to, I, I heard.
So we don't have, we don't have any way in the world to stop it right now?
We do.
How, how's that?
We just, we.
Just ban it right now?
No, we have a choice.
You're shutting down right now, send the chief of the night, and start shutting them down.
Did I say we're gonna send them out tonight?
I don't remember. You said that last week.
I.
It's exactly what you said last week. You said tomorrow.
Let me speak. What I said Tuesday is that, do we have the ability to direct our police department? I didn't send them out, I didn't send them out that night. Let's, let's be clear, don't put words in my mouth.
It works in your mouth.
Okay, so what I'm clear about is that, do we have and possess the ability to enforce and create an ordinance that limits the Texas Penal Code, Chapter forty-seven, gambling. That's specifically what I said. And so, and I'm still gonna stand by that. Council can choose in the direction it wants to go, and that's why I ask, do we have a consensus and is Legal clear on what we're going? I'm just gonna give you a precaution, that because of our timing, we're going to see more permitting. And there is nothing in, in, in what we have done in the city as far as not permitting, to really hold that back. You've asked the question, sometimes, can we put a moratorium? Can we put in a hold? Our city manager's request is that there's nothing which in these, uh, facilities, that they need all the requirements when they're permitting for them to do that. And we can incur, no, we just, we just can't do that, incur what we have in place as far as ordinance or not. So on that premise, since we've been dealing this for about October, is why I'm putting out my caution, saying this is what's gonna happen. Now, do we have any more, more, uh, more direction for, for our legal and what we wanna go with on Tuesday?
Okay, that's super clear. Did you, you, you're with it? Just checking the terminology?
So when we spoke about this, um, a while ago, when we talked about the interlocal, it was also brought up that we could strengthen the ordinance that we do have with Legal's recommendations until the interlocal agreement was entered into. So we just wanna be clear on our direction. Do we not want to amend our ordinance at all and focus on it in the local? Or do we want to strengthen with Legal's recommendations?
That's for us, fixing the act. We can be making these changes to ours. So that, that would, that would, that, we might get challenged on that.
Totally.
Stand, stand and get ready, we might get challenged on it.
We might get challenged on anything.
I understand, but if his concern is the, the rapid increase in the number of game rooms, then the prudent thing to do, would be what Natasha's saying, is adopt our ordinance to re-admit it, which mirrors the county's until such time as we can get into their local agreement and get it, and get it, two readings, blah, blah, blah. That slows it, that would slow it down pretty fast.
And we would recommend, and Legal's recommendations.
Would you recommend, does that slow it down, you mean?
Well, there is a process for amending the ordinance. It just, you just have to follow.
How, what's the process on amending the old?
You'll have to have two readings, and it will come into effect thirty days after you're out.
That, that's faster than waiting on the interlevel. That's, that's faster.
That's something we don't know, because we already have two drafts. Um, we looked at it today. We only have one thing to request from the county, and we've been working with, um, the county attorney, so we don't know the timing. It could be about the same amount of time.
Let me answer, let me answer this question. If you got with them tomorrow, their reading's next Tuesday at ten o'clock in the morning, and they could agree to that one little change, and they adopted it in that morning, and we could adopt it at the council meeting at six?
That's possible.
Is that possible?
That's possible.
Which we did, which gives it on schedule.
County's gonna be, but.
I know.
That's possible. And another thing is.
But if they, I'm sorry, but if they don't, then we go step to game plan two, that's pass our new ordinance and go that direction until we get that.
And we would recommend, um, Legal's changes, not all of the changes that, that council makes, but in the end, it's council decision, so we will, you know, we started with the pleasure of the council, and we'll do whatever council wants to do on it.
So if time is of the essence of the clock, you, that's a way to go, that's a best option.
And there is city council, if, if I may, we've asked our city departments what they thought would be the most beneficial, and, um, even with Chief Gardby, um, if he doesn't mind me, um, speaking about this, and the grandfathering clause is, is what everyone seems to believe would help us at this time.
The grandfather clause, that, that's, that's a deep threat. That is absolutely a deep, because once, wh- once you create a, an ordinance that is, that creates, uh, situations that are different than, than the current ordinance, right? Then we can go in and we can, though, to collect, uh, distances. I mean, that's one that jumps off the page, right? Brought off the bat, and it's the distances from churches, from schools, from residences, from each other. Those are some that, yeah, they get grandfathered in, but also then we can go in and, and take those enforcement actions that would revoke those licenses. And then that, those, those, um, institutions would cease to exist, right? Because then they can't, another person can come in, which has been historically the problem.
Right.
When you go in and you, and you work a, an operation at one of these establishments, you shut it down, two or three days later, a week later, someone else comes in and opens it up again. I mean, it's a revolving door. It's might get your head against a brick wall.
Yes, and it still is, so the thing is, is that we have to grandfather what's existing once it's taken into effect. So Tuesday we'll have a reading, there'll be another two weeks, we have a second reading. And then from that, uh, two weeks from Tuesday, there is thirty days. So, uh, up to that point, it'll still be in effect, is what we'll have is the current ordinance. So they'll, they'll continue to get permit until we get to that thirty days beyond the, the two weeks from Tuesday. That's exactly what I'm trying to say. So the thing is, is that that number's gonna clock. Regardless of that number, let's say that we put in the, the, the limit at thirty. You know, the thing is, is that what will happen is that that number is irrelevant, because even if we exceed it, we're almost gonna be grandfathered. Now, once it loses, if it loses its permit or it's a violation, for example, it has to be permitted, then, only then, it will be, be permitted under the new, uh, ordinance that would have been adopted, second reading, two weeks from, from Tuesday. So in the end, with, you know, and, and so, you know, I'm still in the opinion that, you know, this still stands by that opinion, and so from the, the second district court. But this is why I'm just trying to be aware, this is a process that's handed to us, and this is what we have to follow. We have to follow these rules, and so it ha, it, it handstrings us. But nonetheless, um, you know, when people start making calls and say, hey, I thought you, you regulated, because they're not gonna stand it, you're gonna have to explain it to them, so they can understand, hey, this is what we have to do. And that's what I just wanna make prayer for, for everyone in the back, and, and, and council chairs. But, you know, if you, we have to do the, the, and, and, and he's also a tool, and so he's, he's, he's worked so quick, but he was gonna be a skill process.
I would like to take, I would like to put the power in our hands of what we control, the city, and amend our, our ordinance. Because we don't know, but that's a best case scenario, that the county puts it on their agenda, and discussing it on Tuesday, passes it, and then we can pass it on, on, at ours on that six o'clock meeting. There's no, there's no guarantee that they put on their agenda, and there's, we, we, we can't control, because I would rather do the, take, take our power and do what we can, 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 we can, we can control this. We can, we can control our town, too. We can't control the counties. Just do ours, and then if the county goes in and adopts what we want, then we'll go on the counties. But at least we'll have something going, and the time, and the, and the clock starts ticking, sooner, I mean, that's, I think that's a real difference.
And you're saying, you said blue mark, but you're talking, you're talking about Legal's recommendations of what it would be.
Yeah. Mark, this one right here.
Yes.
I was, I was just saying, we have both of them ready to go, and if they, if they weren't, we're already lucky. You see, and we make two processes. I know what you're saying, I agree with you. We wouldn't make two processes, but I just hope that they have both ready to go, if they act fast enough, then we get that on the front part, instead of ours. If they don't act, then we have a back, like I say, put it back in our hands, we have ours ready to go, if that makes sense. That's all I'm suggesting.
We can do that.
They're, they're, they're talking, they've got it pretty much down, except word is it.
Chief, do you want to say one more?
Yes.
Okay. Kathy, uh, son, you guys?
The only thing that, if we go with Legal's recommendations, is they wouldn't have the.
They're just a requirement, right?
No.
We would only get that if the county, uh, saves their verbiage and we, we adopt the interlocal, right?
Yes. Yes.
It's all first.
In my he, and I'm hesitant, because, you know, those are changes that the council has recommended. And so if the council wants to change from three hundred feet to fifteen hundred feet, even though it's against Legal's recommendation, that is something that you, the city council, can decide, and that's my reason, and that's why I hesitate to say.
I heard you say it.
It's against Legal's recommendation because?
Because the occupational code limits Legal to three hundred feet.
And so that's even, like, if we, if the county goes in and they change their wording to include incorporated and unincorporated, or power, whatever they want to do, theirs already says fifteen hundred. So then, are we okay with fifteen hundred?
Yes.
Or not within that?
I'm with you.
Then. But we don't, but we don't know. I mean, the county attorney may say, this is great, best thing since last spring, but the twenty's still.
So the reason that we don't wanna do fifteen hundred feet is because the, the city doesn't wanna be sued, won't, won't wanna get sued, we want the county to get sued.
Well, we don't want anybody.
But I'm saying, but I'm saying, if they adopt the county ordinance, and they have fifteen hundred feet.
They have authority to have.
We would enforce the county's ordinance, we wouldn't go out.
Yeah.
So in the meantime, we'll get out, and that, that keeps us protected.
Because that Legal would care.
They have the Legal's order.
Correct. The statute, the state statute says the county can regulate fifteen hundred feet. The state statute says that. So the county is not at risk of litigation on that matter.
We just have to ask. A little unfortunate, and so, that, that's why we, we sent those recommendations, and we're like, I have more authority than the county. So it's just, that way I would, it would maybe show, because some cities have, we simulate their ordinance. And so, in the, in the interlocal, and, and the task was not literally the task force, but the purpose of being able to enforce a county ordinance within the incorporated city, that, that makes sense.
Mr. Baldwin? Limiting the fact that we're gonna have an explosion of applications, possibly, because of this outbreak. There's not anything we can do about it, so there's no reason to, I mean, it's all statutory. State's laid it out, what we can do, and it's all statutory, so I'm, I'm thinking that there's no reason to beat that horse. You know, there's no reason to be concerned about getting fourteen applications next week, because it is what it is.
And we can only do what we can do.
We can only do what we can do.
Yeah.
None of, none of us, I think we're all in agreement about the problems that surround these establishments. You know, it's not gonna stop it from happening, it just, it won't be one nuclear spot for it to happen, so, anyway.
So just so we can be clear, we're gonna go back to the county and ask them to, to, um, do away with their, or to change the wording on their, um, in their limits of game rooms.
And I think it's important for us to verify how many the county has now, and how many the city has, before we go to them. And that's something we can, um, communicate to the council once we get a firm number, and see what that number is we want to propose to the county, and see maybe even if they have a counter and get back to the city.
So we're gonna propose that, and the light, or the light industrial.
Um, I thought it was, um, I thought everybody just thought it was a general number.
Okay, very good, all right.
A general number, yeah.
Because it will also.
Okay, I'm just trying to get clear as well.
Yeah, so that's why the most important part of that ordinance, that, that thing, I'm changing.
Captain, what's your?
Next one.
My thought is that let's get moving. I think we've talked about this, and talked about it, and talked about it, and talked about it. And I'm in agreement with you. There's some things we just cannot control. And it's just going to be what it's going to be, and we move forward from that. I think we should have both of them ready, let's go with what we've got to go with. We've got to follow the law. We've got to follow the procedure, and there's no way around it. And let's, let's just keep it on this.
Okay, so we have, we have consensus, you know, from the members. Uh, and so we'll go with communication from legal, and direction, and clear this from there. And then we'll go back to those recommendations on Tuesday, and then we'll put it up.
Yes.
Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to item eleven, we take the session. That, we have to do two, two readings. What do you think for session?
If you'll just leave the whole, um, the, the item as a whole, that would be sufficient.
As I thought, the Texas Government Code, section five five one, page one zero one, City Council will hold and take the session which is closed to the public. To discuss the problem managed within the following section of the Texas Government Code. Section five five one, point zero seven one, to the civil city attorneys, I want to discuss conflict litigation along chapter three eighty seven of the Texas Government Code. Item two, discuss opinion, number key, Pete dash zero P six five, issued by Kenny Paxton, Attorney General of the C of Texas. On any point of that three year term, we have a motion. I have a motion, I have a counsel, I just want to say that my counsel, Tom, said, I want every case in that. All the closing statements in that, we are in the same session, we will resume.
I'll find a place near your place. I got a trouble.
When that first started, I think we were chief of management, that ordinance, you know. And within a year, four years, they robbed us, they were gone.
Well, we, we have a high alley theory, and I think that's
Probably all the street.
How that worked. I think they're, they're
They don't have a lot of steam rooms. Last four years, I've not seen It's just a matter of exposing that, and then we do a good presentation that that ties in.
Ready to say it all we can?
Yeah, I don't have any lunch yet tonight, that's a good thing.
Chief? All right?
I don't give money out of what she's
Come on. It was like It was like paint that benefited you.
I know.
Have you done any good receptions anyhow?
Yes.
No?
I don't know, I, uh, yesterday we was catching up for our weekend, today was, I think you're all there. For the reasons? I had Yeah, everyone's there. We had a staff meeting, Salvation Army, Laurel, here. I had a retirement deal I had to get to, and I'm already late for Kevin doing his back.
Uh, well, one one is in staff.
Well, he may have to live with that because I'm
I mean
Can you check if there are links to it?
Can you check if we have a school? (coughs) Thank you. Where would we begin now? Question mark. (inaudible) Thank you. 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 (inaudible) Thank you.